I'll be right back.
Mr. Jones, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Great. Thanks, everyone. I will be, we'll be starting in just a moment. All right. Well, good evening. Tonight is Monday, March 8th, and I am calling this meeting to order. Orange County Schools Board of Education pledges to our families, students, staff, and the greater community to conduct our business in courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff, and citizens. The board asks its citizens to conduct themselves with the same courtesy towards all staff members and each other. As per board's policy, Robert's Rules of Order will be used to conduct meetings, and a moment of silence will be observed before we begin our business. Public comment will be held tonight after the board adopts the agenda. As we begin our work this evening, I ask that we remember that OCS educates our students on the traditional land of the Oknichi Band of the Saponi Nation, and reflect on building authentic community who works honestly to repair generations of harm and racism. In honor of International Women's Day, which is celebrated around the world today, I thank the many women who dedicate their days to the students of Orange County Schools. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you for that. And now we have recognition. Dr. Foulard.
Why, thank you. Good evening, Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, to all board members, students, staff, and families. Welcome. And so, next slide, please. Indeed, we have a number of recognitions tonight, and Mrs. McKenzie, you hit on the first one. Indeed, today is International Women's Day, and this month is Women's History Month. So, Women's History Month is a celebration of women's contributions, including the often overlooked contributions of women that women have made to history, culture, and society. Women's History Month is observed annually in the month of March in the United States since 1987. So, in Orange County Schools, we honor women today and every day. Next slide, please. This week, we are also celebrating School Social Work Week. School social workers play a vital role in schools providing services to students, families, staff, and the school community. School social workers invest their time, training, and expertise to remedy barriers to learning. They work with teachers, administrators, parents, and other educators to provide coordinated interventions and consultation designed to keep students in school and to offer hope. Today, we honor Orange County Schools' 12 amazing social workers. I will tell you, I've worked in a number of districts. I have yet to work in a district prior to coming here, where every school has a social worker. And to me, that speaks volumes about the district's concern about the whole child. Oftentimes, we focus on just the academic side of the child. But we know that in order to truly educate a child and improve outcomes, we have to focus on the whole child. So, the district's commitment to doing that by ensuring there's a social worker in every school speaks volumes. At this time, I invite Ms. Sharita Cobb, Director of Student Services, who works very closely with and oversees the work of our social workers to bring additional remarks. Ms. Cobb.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to take this time and personally thank each and every social worker for all the hard work and dedication that they give to the children and families of Orange County. It is International Women's Day, so we celebrate women as well, and we celebrate all 11 of our wonderful female social workers and our one male social worker who do an outstanding job every day for the children of Orange County. I say thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cobb. And so, last but certainly not least, we want to recognize National Reading Month, which is another March celebration. National Reading Month encourages students to read for pleasure. Studies have shown that reading for pleasure makes a huge difference in a child's educational performance. Those who read for fun or are read to for fun on a regular basis tend to perform better on reading assessments and also develop a broader vocabulary, increase general knowledge, and a better understanding of other cultures. Reading stimulates the imagination and expands students' understanding of the world. Indeed, reading is the foundation for all learning. So, we encourage, continue to encourage, all OCS students and families to make reading a fun part of every day. That concludes the recognitions for this meeting.
Thank you so much, Felder. Um, let's see here. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Atherton and a second from Ms. Howser. I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yeah.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Howser?
Yeah.
Our agenda has been adopted. Now is the time for public comments. After each speaker has been recognized and unmuted, they will have three minutes to speak. The board will not have a discussion with any speaker. No profane vulgar language will be permitted or personal abuse against any person. Public comments should not address any specific confidential student or personnel matter. Complaints concerning specific employees or students are not permissible during public comments. Let me refresh the page and make sure I have the most up-to-date list. Our only public speaker tonight is Ms. Jessica Harrell. Mr. Jones, will you please unmute her?
Hi, everyone. Okay, well, I'm honored. I'm the only one. I will try to keep it to three minutes. So, I signed up to speak tonight about a larger return to in-person learning. Concerned that I don't see an agenda item to begin discuss the planning for this. I've mentioned before that we've chosen to keep my third grader in virtual learning because I think that four days in person followed by six days of asynchronous learning wouldn't be beneficial for her academically compared to having a full-time teacher in the virtual format. My choice to remain virtual does not mean that I'm opposed to her going to school in person. I'm actually all for it. And I recognize that a hybrid approach to reopening makes sense in order to reopen gradually, but I think the hybrid version of learning is a disservice to all students. They struggle to learn asynchronously and struggle to meet academic standards while remote. It's a disservice to teachers, putting more burden on the teachers to manage two sets of students, sometimes three sets of students, if they have cohorts A, B, and virtual, and it's a disservice to working families to try to balance the changing schedule. So, I'm hoping to hear tonight about any considerations, data gathering, or plans that are being made to increase capacity of in-person learning in the school building so that we can move away from a hybrid format. I know there are plenty of private schools in the Triangle area, as well as public schools across the country that have been in-person for quite some time. And so what lessons can we learn from them? I know some do half-day for half of the students, half-day for the rest of the students, giving every student an opportunity to be in school at least part of the day. Some are using gyms and cafeterias and outdoor spaces in order to maintain distancing between students and allow for students to be there at the same time. So, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. How have other schools and districts done this successfully? The American Academy of Pediatrics maintains that school COVID-19 plan should start with a goal of having students physically present in school. They referenced a study that looked at how some countries have been able to successfully reopen after first controlling community widespread while using three feet of distance between students without increases in community spread. They go on to say that desks should be placed at least three feet apart, and ideally six feet. The North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services current guidelines state that for K to five students, schools should return to in-person instruction to the fullest extent possible, up to five days per week, while following all public health protocols. And CDHS guidelines also state that three feet of social distancing while stationary and seated at desk is acceptable, and they recommend six feet when moving. So, based on the data that was released today, Orange County is at 64 cases per 100,000 people in the last seven days. So, that's pretty close to the CDC guidelines of less than 50 per 100K for all students, for all schools to go in full-time in-person instruction. And so, I'm curious what options can be or should be considered for Orange County. I'm hoping to see some discussion and action from the board on moving towards the goal of having all students physically present in school. It's going to take time to develop and implement these plans, and so I'm hoping to see these discussions happening as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Harrell. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Smiley and a second from Ms. Doyle. Ms. Howser?
Yeah.
Vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yeah.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Our consent agenda has been unanimously approved. The first item on our information tonight is a discussion about our equity resolution from the phone and an update on each of the action items there. I think it's really important for us to reflect on the work that we, as a board, unanimously approved as the list of things that we valued for this school year. So, I'm going to take the time to read that resolution for members of the public who are listening, and just so the board can really reflect on what we outlined and said that we value the staff working on this academic year. So, this was adopted on September 14th, and it reads, "Whereas, Orange County Schools acknowledges persistent racial intolerance and equities and academic disparities in our district as defined by Policy 1030. And whereas, Policy 1030 states that Orange County Schools will take active measures to develop and promote a culture of high expectations for all students, identify and eliminate inequities in access to opportunities, continuously raise the level of achievement for all students while eliminating academic disparities, ensure that personal characteristics, real or perceived, will not predict any individual's educational outcomes, recognize and aggressively address opportunity gaps, actively recruit, support, and retain a diverse workforce, actively train and support all administrators, teachers, and staff in implementing this policy, including creating culturally affirming and relevant classrooms and schools. Engage with staff, students, parents, and guardians, and the entire community to build and sustain a culture emblematic of the ideals of equity policy, and equitably allocate resources to accomplish these goals. And whereas, we acknowledge that students, families, and staff have not always felt safe speaking out about race-related issues and racially charged incidents in OCS. And whereas, we must continue to place value on building a culture dedicated to truth and respect for each person's lived experience. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic is also impacting families in disparate ways along lines of race and income, and this could amplify existing educational disparities and put at risk our forward momentum as a district with a named commitment to equity in education. Now, therefore, we, the Orange County Schools Board of Education, resolve to do the following during this 2020-2021 school year. One, as a body, attend racial equity training to work through how we govern in a district that has disparate educational outcomes along the lines of race and socioeconomic status, and purposefully work together to decrease achievement and opportunity gaps. Two, continue to evaluate the effectiveness of remote, hybrid, and in-person learning with an equity lens and direct staff to take action to eliminate inequities in access, experience, and outcomes. Three, ensure the district sets measurable goals for student growth and achievement that align with our equity goals and regularly monitor progress. Four, ensure that the district creates, implements, and evaluates a yearly equity plan. Five, ensure that an overarching equity focus is integrated into the district's next strategic plan, naming actionable steps to work towards changing disparate outcomes and experiences in the school district, and including performance metrics to evaluate progress. Six, work through the board's Community Engagement Committee to identify and address gaps in the board's communication as a governing body with various stakeholder groups such as Latinx and Spanish-speaking families and Black and Indigenous families, and reengage with the district's Equity Task Force in their advisory capacity to the board. Seven, begin a full equity audit of the board's policy manual. Eight, begin a full equity review of district resource allocation. Provide district-wide training on implicit bias, culturally responsive teaching strategies, and effective communication and family engagement. Ten, hereby declare Juneteenth paid holiday in Orange County Schools. Eleven, review the names of buildings in our district to examine their origin and compliance with Policy 1030. Ensure that OCS is continuing to take steps to practice multicultural and culturally responsive pedagogy and implement curricula that include an accurate representation of perspectives. Thirteen, analyze access barriers to programs and opportunities within OCS that have a disproportionate representation of students along racial or socioeconomic lines, and determine how the board can support equitable access to these opportunities. Fourteen, create and support a task force in the district to assess school discipline that will provide feedback to the board of education, including recommendations about the use of in-school and out-of-school suspensions, referrals to justice programs, and the use of school resource officers as requested by students and community members. And fifteen, recognize the phrase "Black Lives Matter" not as a partisan or cynical statement, but as an affirmation of the inherent value of the lives of our Black students, staff, and community members, and affirm that Black Lives Matter. Thank you all for letting me read that. I know that was, it's a lot, but I think it's really important, like I said before, that we reflect on this important body of work that we decided to pursue in the midst of a pandemic. And I'm just really glad that all of us were unanimously on the same page with it, and am grateful for all of the staff members who are helping us work through these things in the district. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Keeling, who will give us an update on these items. Welcome, Dr. Keeling.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie. Everyone, so, as Ms. McKenzie said tonight, I want to go through each of the items in the resolution and give an update of where we are with our progress. So, there are three items tonight that we're going to discuss in detail. The other items that are in the resolution, I'm gonna just give like a status update and some of the work that we're doing towards it. But the three that we will discuss in further detail tonight is item four, which speaks to the district's equity plan, item eight, which is a full equity review of the district's resource allocation, and item eleven, where we will discuss a topic for the school renaming process. So, the first item in the resolution is for the board as a body to attend racial equity training, and this item is in progress. Right now, we are researching some organizations to provide the training and anticipate that this full-body training will take place sometime in May. The next item is to continue to evaluate the effectiveness of remote, hybrid, and in-person learning. This item is in process and ongoing. So, as we continue to work toward a full in-person for all grades, and we will also offer a virtual school, and so we'll continue to evaluate the effectiveness of instruction and the quality of experience, and address any barriers to access, experience, and outcomes. And we will be presenting that information to the board and making sure that when we present, we tie it back to the resolution so that the board and the community is always aware of the actions that we're doing that relate back to the resolution. Number three says that we will ensure that the district sets measurable goals for student growth and achievement that align with the equity goals, and we will monitor progress. Much like item number two, this is in process and ongoing. We will continue to give updates to the board as it relates to student growth and achievement. You will see tonight that we will discuss the equity goals, but as we just continue to work through the school years, we will always be coming back and letting the board know what are our goals and how are we getting there. Number four, as I said, we will go into a little more depth with that one in a few minutes. Number five is to ensure that an overarching equity focus is integrated into the district's next strategic plan. And so, we've already begun the process towards creating the strategic plan. We are trying to identify the vision and the mission, and so we have put together a equity-focused communication plan for acquiring stakeholders. And so, it has us speaking to stakeholders, our Spanish-speaking community translating everything, including students, like really using this equity lens to reach those stakeholders that we sometimes don't hear from. We've even changed the wording on a question that we have posted on the website. We changed it to make it even a little bit more readable so that people can really understand what we're asking and say it in a way that's just how you and I are talking right now. We're also going to make sure that our strategic plan aligns with the equity plan, and so we'll see when we get to that part of crafting the plan with the goals and the strategies, you will see the alignment between that plan and the equity plan's goals as well. Number six is to work through the board's Community Engagement Committee to identify and address gaps in board communication. So, Orange County Schools was actually chosen to be part of this nationwide organization called Flamboyon Fellows. And so, we are Flamboyon Fellows. We are part of their fellowship, and we have meetings with them, and the whole purpose of this fellowship is to learn how to engage your community and your families in authentic ways. And so, at each of the Community Engagement Committee meetings, we give an update of the work that we're doing as fellows. We will also be coming to speak at the next Community Engagement Meeting. Each of the Community Engagement Committee meetings, we open up with a reflection activity and a statement that centers equity so that we can be sure that throughout the meeting that we are focused on identifying where are those gaps, particularly for the families that are listed in the item. And then, the Equity Task Force had a joint meeting with the Community Engagement Committee. They offered some recommendations for the board and just had some conversation around helping the Community Engagement Committee to know what is the best way to engage some families who have been pushed to the mark, quite honestly. Number six is to begin a full equity audit of the board's policy manual. This is in process. And so, we are actually reviewing and updating a number of policies in the policy committee meetings. And as we go through those policies we're reviewing and updating, we will be using a racial equity impact assessment to assess those policies to make sure that they are not creating additional inequities and that they are actually being rewritten and revised in a way that addresses those inequities that exist. Our next slide. Number eight is to begin a full equity review of the Number eight is to begin a full equity review of the district's resource allocation, and that's one of the items discussing further tonight. Um, number nine is to provide district-wide equity training on implicit, uh, culturally responsive teaching. And effective communication and family engagement. This is in process. We have, um. We are working with an organization called IDRA, which is the Inter-Cultural Development Research Association. They come quarter and hold training with all of our staff. So, um, they do back to, they're meeting with half of the elementary schools and all of the middle school staff. And then the next week, they meet with the other half of our elementary schools and all of our high school staff. And so our staff is going through this training with them. Uh, it is open and, and highly encouraged for, uh, district leadership to attend. And so, uh, they, our leadership and cabinet also pushes that out to the other parts of our leadership. So our directors, our, uh, coordinators, our facilitators all come to this meeting. And, um, they're training upwards of two to three hundred staff members like in those sessions. So, um, each time that they bring us together. So this is something that's in progress. It's actually almost completed. We have one more session to go for fourth quarter. Um, declare Juneteenth a paid holiday for Orange County schools. This is complete in the sense that it is declared a holiday. It is on the books as such. But there's still some more work to be done. We want to educate our staff and our community around Juneteenth. And why, um, it was necessary to take this date and to elevate it and to make it a paid holiday. So there's still some work to do around the educating part. Uh, number eleven is to review the names of schools, which that part is complete. But we have some additional steps that we will be discussing tonight. And so that's one of the items that we'll have more information on. Number twelve is to ensure that OCS is continuing to take steps to practice multicultural and culturally responsive pedagogy. So you will see that is listed as not started. And that is because we want to do that for day one for next year. And so we are focused on having, um, our 2021, 2022 school year. Really getting our, our staff and our teachers, um, the, the reasons that they need to be able to do culturally responsive pedagogy. What we are doing this year is putting those systems in place so that when next, we'll be ready to be up and running. We are, um, working with, um, a professor at UNC who was also a member of our Equity Task Force. We had a conversation with her around setting up a, um, a model or a framework. Of how we can begin to put those pieces in place, as I said, so that we can get up and running for next year. Number thirteen is to analyze access barriers to programs and opportunities. This is in process and it will also be ongoing. Um, much like I said, uh, before, whenever we present. We will be sure to identify that this is one of those items. Or this is one of those things that we are doing that relate back to the resolution. And so we have a couple of programs and opportunities that we are working on that will begin to, um, address some of our access barriers. And so in the future, when we present, sort of to let the board know, this is one of those opportunities. Number fourteen is to create and support a task force around school discipline. This is in process. We do have a committee in place right now. Um, and so there's still some more work to do around the committee, but we do have a committee in place. We are looking at discipline data. We are beginning to have conversations, um, with our SROs around what changes might need to be made. But we're going to do some more work and reach out to students and to families and get their input as well. So that's something that's in process. And then finally, the, the phrase "Black Lives Matter." Um, that it is not partisan or political and that it affirms the value of the lives of its staff and community members. This is ongoing. Um, this year, we did have schools that recognize, recognize Black Lives Matter at School Week, which is the first February. It leads into our Black History Month. Uh, but this is not something that this is a checkoff. This is a something that is what we are constantly doing. We always want our, uh, staff and our students and our community members to know that their lives are affirmed. And so I'm gonna pause there because that was a lot and see if there are any questions.
Smiley?
Um, first of all, Dr. Keeling, thank you so much for going through, um, this update on all of these items. And I just also want to recognize how many things I know you are working on that aren't even on this list. Um, so thank you for your leadership of this work. Um, it feels really, really good to hear all the places that there have been steps made, even as I know. There is always so much more to do, um, but thank you. Um, um, I have, I think, just two, like, comments, um, beyond just, it's great to see some progress here in so many places. One is on the other slide, items like three, four, and five just feel so deeply connected to me. Um, the idea of setting measurable goals, having a yearly plan, and having a strategic plan. Um, that I, I mean, I'm assuming that those all are sort of, um, tightly linked in practice. Um, and maybe not in how we wrote them, but, um, um, you know, that all coming together into a cohesive whole. I see you nodding, so. Yeah. Um, and then the other is, um, just a reflection on this, and I would love, you know, at whatever cadence we're getting, sort of regular updates on progress. Um, um, I think it would be helpful for people who aren't in the board meeting itself. If this had sort of, here's what the resolution is and like, what have we done? You know, the sort of the high-level statuses is very useful, but, um, even just hearing you describe, like, these are the steps we've taken in these places. And, you know, here's what we're gonna do next. Um, that kind of approach, I think, could be helpful just to be able to share with other people who aren't able to join us, um, in the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. And we will work on a, a really tight plan around this. Uh, so that everyone can see, like you said, who didn't attend the board meeting, where we are heading. Thank you for that.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes, just to build on that, you know, I, I wondered if there's a way, and I'm gonna just mention COVID is happening too. Which is affecting everything. But is there a way for us to get a baseline of where we are on key metrics? And that would be like two achievements, achieving a diverse workforce. Discipline, participation in our marquee programs like AIG or PTE. But to get like a dashboard and actually put it out there. And let's really hold ourselves accountable so that we're doing this immense amount of work. How do we know we're really making progress if we're not measuring outcomes? So I just want to throw that out there as a thought.
So.
I know you have.
So, Ms. Ms., Ms. Hauser, uh, thank you for raising, um, the need to be very transparent, have measurable, uh, outcomes. Uh, that is the plan. Uh, that will be part of our strategic plan. And, uh, the goal is to have a very forward-facing, transparent, public, uh, dashboard. Um, that will encompass all of that.
Other board members have thoughts, questions?
Ms. McKenzie, I don't have, um, I don't have video right now, so I'm just jumping in. I can't.
Please do. Sorry. Please do. You're great.
Um, thank you, Dr. Keeling. And I, um, I really appreciate, um. Hillary, you're reading everything and, um, here are each of the cases. It's just, there really is a lot in there and it's good to be, have it kind of elucidated where all of. Um, there's so many, there's so many wheels moving right now, and I'm just really glad to hear that review of them. And, and Dr. Felder or Dr. Keeling, um, it'll be exciting to hear, and I'm assuming this will be in what you're talking about with a dashboard. Um, but it'll be exciting to hear the, um, sort of the, the pedagogy piece and the curriculum piece. Um, is that something that we anticipate having, um, kind of visible or presented, um, before the start of the school year?
Thank you, Ms. Doyle, for your, uh, question. Um, yes, so, uh, we will certainly update the board, the public. Uh, with regards to any upgrades to curriculum or curricula, uh, for, uh, and programs, et cetera, for next school year. Prior to the start of the school year.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Dr. Keeling, so much. Echo Ms. Smiley's remarks. You, I hope you know how much I appreciate you. And, um, grateful for your work on this and, and so many others in the district who are putting in a lot of work for this.
Thank you. So we will continue. Okay, next slide is up. Uh, so one of the items that we are going to speak to with a little more depth tonight. Is, um, item number four is to ensure that the district creates a yearly equity plan. Uh, this item is so in the equity policy. And so tonight, we are going, um, look at the framework and the goals. So this is our framework. Um, we use the word equity a lot. But what does it actually mean and look like in Orange County schools? And how will we know when we get there? This is our district equity framework. We will use this framework to identify those patterns that consistently result in inequitable outcomes and negative experiences. And we will use this framework so that we will be creating systems, structures, policies, and practices. That continually work to eliminate disparities in all our schools across the district. This framework is based in research, and it's also being embedded through schools and equity teams and the community. Um, one thing about, um, the equity plan and this, the framework and the goals and the strategies is this is not something that I just went in. This and created by myself. Um, I did put the pieces together, but then I take it back to the teams. I get input and feedback. Um, it's also why we're presenting it to the board and to the community. So that it is a, a framework for our, for Orange County schools. It's not a framework of Dr. Keeling or the Equity Department. It is a framework for Orange County schools, so it takes all of us. So the first pillar is the educational experience. Um, and I have said it before that it is as important to me that our students have a great experience. As they go through Orange County schools, as well as have great scores. I don't believe that we just want to have great scores. We want students to feel safe and we want to love being in Orange County schools. And so this first pillar speaks to that. It is focused on our culturally relevance and sustaining teaching. And having safe, inclusive, and affirming environments. Equity in Orange County schools means ensuring that every student has access to high-quality instruction. And curriculum that is relevant, where their culture and language is included, and that it is historically accurate. Equity in Orange County schools also means ensuring that every student, staff, and family feel safe, heard, acknowledged, supported. And that they see themselves represented from pre-K to graduation. And for our staff, for the length of their employment in Orange County schools. Our next pillar is equity embedded leadership. And the focus of this pillar is around professional development and capacity building, reflection, and support for staff. Equity in Orange County schools means ensuring that every school board member, district leader, school administrator, teacher, staff member. Has the skills, mindset, and knowledge to create, lead, and support environments and learning experiences. That are equitable, unbiased, and that respond to the cultural and language needs of staff and families. That recognizes and celebrates the diversity of our students, staff, and families. The next pillar is equity-guided decision-making. The focus of this pillar is equitable policy, practice, decisions, actions, and the equitable allocation of resources. Equity in Orange County schools means critically examining every decision, policy, practice, and how we allocate resources. Determine their alignment with the district's definition of equity and the district equity goals. Equity in Orange County schools means examining the racial and equity impact of every decision, policy, practice, and allocation of resources. In order to prevent any potential adverse consequences on underrepresented groups. And ensure equitable outcomes for all students, families, students, and staff. And the fourth pillar is around collective responsibility, the focus of which is. Authentic family and community engagement and collaboration towards a culture of equity. Equity in Orange County schools means ensuring that we are intentionally listening to those families, communities, and staff. Who have historically been silenced and unheard. Equity in Orange County schools means partnering with families, community, students, and staff. To engage in dialogue about race and equity issues. And to work to address those inequities, to heal harm, and to hold each other accountable for creating a district. Where we all feel safe, included, that all of our students succeed and thrive. Next slide, please. Each of those pillars that I just discussed in the framework has goals to help us identify the outcomes that we want to achieve. One of the things you will notice within the framework and the goal is that it includes all states. So it includes students, it includes all of the staff and leadership, our family, our community, and the OCS school. Achieving these equitable outcomes and experiences takes all of us. And in everything we do, we should be able to show how it moves us closer to our goals. And so you'll begin to notice that when the staff begins to present at board meetings. They will begin to, much like they will do when we have our strategic plan in place around how, um, thing that we are presenting. How it relates back to our equity goals, how it relates back to our strategic plan, much like Ms. Smiley was saying, how it all comes together. So goes one and two tie back to the educational experience. Goal one is to identify and address academic disparities and inequities in access to and success in programs and opportunities. And equity goal two was to create safe, inclusive, culturally and linguistically affirming, relevant, and sustainable spaces and experiences. Goal three is tied to equity embedded leadership. And it is to build the equity leadership capacity of district leaders, administrators, teachers, staff, and the OCS school board. By providing them with the skills, mindset, and knowledge to lead with equity. Goals four and five are tied to equity-guided decision-making. To recruit, hire, support, and retain a staff that reflects the diversity of the district. And mirrors the diversity of the OCS student population. And equity goal five is to make decisions, draft policies, and allocate and utilize resources. In a way that is aligned with the district's equity policy. And to assess the racial and equity impact of decisions, policies, and resource allocation. And identify strategies to address inequities. Goal six is tied to our collective responsibility. And it is to engage staff, students, families, and the entire community in developing, cultivating, and sustaining a culture of equity. So what I've just presented tonight around the framework and the goals is only part of the equity plan. At upcoming board meetings, we will be presenting the data that speaks to why each goal was chosen. Um, fault statements, which address what conditions are needed to achieve the goal and what result we're trying to get to. The measures that show progress towards achieving the results. The strategies that will be done to achieve the outcomes, as well as timelines and accountability cycles. So at this time, I will pause for any questions.
Ms. Smiley?
Um, thank you. Could we, um, just go back to that last slide? Um, thank you. Um, the, the, the pillars, um, made so much sense to me as, um, four domains. Um, I, um, just have a couple of specific. I just have a couple of specific little wording suggestions, or I don't know. You don't have to answer them as questions, just thoughts. Oh, and I guess I'll start with this. In some of my other experiences, a goal is that numeric measure that you're going towards. And so I understand that that's being used differently here, but it sounds like there will be some sort of, I'm not sure what term you'd use, but like the targets, the numeric sort of outcomes you'd be looking for, that's to come? Is that right?
Yeah, so I use the term our results statements. We actually discussed having them be action statements or not thought about results statements because of GARE, like they use results-based accountability. And so I kind of like that. So we're still playing around with it. So it's for all of us to have the input, right? So I'm going to take all of this and we'll make changes as needed.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I think at some point, just understanding terms in here or the strategic plan, just understanding terms would be helpful. The first one says identify and address academic disparities. And I'm curious why it doesn't say something like identify and eliminate academic disparities and inequities. Address doesn't feel strong enough to me as our goal. So that's a suggestion, I guess, is to think about that wording. And then around collective responsibility. I guess my question is, is the goal around, like just around the equity work? Is that like the focus or, because when I think about like an equitable school district, it actually just involves students and families and community in different ways in everything, in all of the other things the school district is doing and how it functions. And so I guess I'm curious about that one, if the focus is around like the equity work or the work of the school district.
It's around the work of the school district, and it's around our processes of how we come to our decisions. And so that involves hearing those who we may not have heard before. And it involves, as I said, like accountability towards creating this district that we all want to. So I just worded that as safe, inclusive, and where students succeed and thrive. Just, oh, we're only going to discuss equity. It's a creation of our district.
That's awesome. So I love that. And you might just want to, you might want to think about that ending to that phrase and just making sure that it's really clear that it's about how we're engaging, like in true partnership, and especially around decision-making, things like that with students and families. And sort of, it actually goes beyond like when we're specifically talking about equity, but we're actually talking about the way we do everything. But yeah, love to see this forward progress. Also, I'm really excited to see the next phase of things that come after this.
Thank you. I took notes on that wording so I can capture it. Thanks.
Other board members? I'm not seeing any questions.
So if there are no questions, we will now move into next slide, please. The next item that we're going to go into a little more depth in, and that is item number eight, which is a full equity review of the district's resource allocation. And so we have with us Dr. Roger, Dr. Tom Shelton of Millennium Learning Concepts. Doctors Cleveland and Shelton will be conducting a two-part assessment. One part is an equity assessment of our finance and budgetary structures. And then the other part is a broader district-wide equity assessment. And so I will now turn it over to Doctors Cleveland and Shelton.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
All right. Thanks for the invitation, and I appreciate you, all the work you're doing right now. That's great. As Dr. Keeling, somebody is Roger Cleveland. I live in Lexington, Kentucky, where we do a lot of this work nationwide and let Tom do some stuff real quick. It's great.
Mr. Shelton, I'm sorry to say we're having trouble hearing you. Mr. Cleveland, I might need to ask you to mute while Mr. Shelton speaks, and then maybe we can hear him a little bit better.
Try it now.
I think that's going to be better. Let's give it a try. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Shelton.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and start and Tom, yours is a little, still a little jumpy a little bit. So you may want to check your connection while I'm starting out. Once again, I want to thank you all for this time. I know you're very busy, so I won't take up too much time. So what I'd like to do is kind of just go through, talk a little bit about what a finance and equity assessment is. And Tom's going to talk more about the finance part, and I'm going to talk about the teaching and learning part around looking at the district or equity lens. So you go to the next slide, please. And just go ahead and hit a few times. And so I don't want to read the slides verbatim, but you know, the primary purpose, I know a lot of times that people will do some kind of an assessment and things of that nature. And for the most part, it's just collect data, and then this is what we found. That's, that's part of it. But our really part of this whole assessment is, one, we look at data, the quantitative part. But I always say there's a story behind the stats, right? And so we have, we have achievement data, discipline data, looking at access, who's in gifted, who's in academic, who's in advanced placement, honors, and things like that, and looking at numbers, which is, that's part of it. But the other, a couple of the pieces about it is that, you know, a rhetorical question to think about when I talk to districts is looking at equity, just kind of the information that Dr. Keeling just went over, and ask yourself through an equity lens, is your vision, mission, your policy, your plan, your practices, your professional development, and the resources all aligned as it relates to equity? And particularly the practices. So the district has a major focus, like you all do, on equity. And so the question becomes, are those things taking place in the classroom that's aligned back to the policies and practices that was in your resolution, that's going to be in your plan? That's the question. So this process looks at that. And if you can hit, go to the next slide. I want to talk about the process of what this looks like. So it's a three-phase process. And the first part of process, what we call a desk audit. And you go to the next slide, please. And so desk audit is what we call is document review. And so we examine through the lens of equity, policies, your, we know achievement data, discipline data, previous climate surveys or equity surveys that you may have disseminated through schools. We look at finance and budget documents, allocation of resources, professional development plan, whatever kind of programs you all have, all that's before we ever come to Orange County. So that's called a desk audit. And the purpose for that is, and you go to the next slide, please. The purpose of that is to look at it and see where do we need to go next? What do we need to look for, right? And so those, that's a red flag analysis. And so a lot of things that we find in the desk audit, next slide, please. What we find in the desk audit is the, is looking at potential red flags. And what that does is help us design a unique survey, a unique interview questions for the district. Instead of just doing one, for instance, I'm doing, we're doing those two right now and outside of Houston. And so even though those districts are in the city of Houston, those districts have different issues around equity. And so the survey for one district is going to be a little different than the other. There may be some questions that may be similar. Next slide, please. And so we talked about, this is a document review, looking at issues of that nature. And then this is where it goes a little more detail. This is where people usually stop is when we look at the, I mean, the achievement data, quantified data, and things of that nature, we usually stop. So after we do the desk audit, as we're looking at all your documents and things like the policies and things of that nature. Because remember, this is a district assessment, not school assessment. And so next thing we do is we do a equity and climate survey. And that's for students, families, certified staff, classified staff, and central office. The surveys will be different. So and the families are optional. Sometimes districts want to do it for families. Sometimes they don't. It's up to them. But the surveys will be different, obviously, for students. And we usually serve, we usually survey students from fourth grade up. And then we have a parent, a family survey, certified staff, what we call classified staff, that may be bus drivers, people who work in the cafeterias and things of that nature, support staff, and then certified staff. And then we have central office staff. And the surveys will be a little bit different for central office staff versus those who are in the schools. You can take it again for me? Advance it, please. And that's the quantitative data. The part that we, people that are using it, I'll go to is the qualitative data. And that is, we conduct focus group interviews. And so we interview students from fourth grade up to 12th grade. We interview families, teachers, support staff. We also interview administrators and also central office staff. But also, so we would visit all 13-year schools. And this, the way this would work is that myself, Tom, and let's say Amanda Bunch is on one team, so a team of three. And so we will go to an elementary school in the morning, probably you say 7:45 till 11:00. And while we're at that school, we're doing walkthroughs. One person's interviewing staff, one person's interviewing students. We'll leave that school and go to, let's say, a feeder school, a middle school that's nearby and do the exact same thing. But there's another team doing another two schools that day, and another team doing another two schools that day. Come back the next morning, so we can actually visit every one of your schools. We'll also have someone interviewing staff at the central office and board members, if available. So if you look at this, the desk audit is three phases. So the collecting data is looking at the desk audit, looking at documents at the district level. The second piece is around collecting quantitative data and qualitative data. And like I said, usually most districts stop at just looking at quantitative data, and all it does is paint the picture. You don't know why your scores are like they are. You don't know why the discipline's like they are. We don't know why this is shortage or over-representation of students or in special education or under-organization of students in gifted, things of that nature. We just have the data. But we rarely ever ask why that is, and we never get the qualitative data. So the ideal is to triangulate this information. Desk audit, document review, survey, quantitative data, and then qualitative data. Next slide piece. So what do we do with all this? You know, so we look at all this information and write a report. And that report includes our findings, opportunities to grow, recommendations, commendations, and resources, and next steps. And so we know every district is doing a lot of good work. And so we want to make sure we highlight the great things that are going in the district, and then there's recommendations. And that's how the report is. We write a draft report, and we usually give it the draft report to the superintendent to make sure there's no omissions or we left something out, or things of that nature. Or in this case, Dr. Feld has an understanding of what's going on in the report. Then we actually, the final report, we present to the board. And what then, when we do that, we present the findings, the report to the board, we also do a little professional development. Because what I find, my experience, we've done about 85 of these throughout the country. And a lot of times what I find when there's an equity initiative, that there is, there's not common language and common messaging around equity. And that's critical. So we always want to make sure that if you run into a board member or a principal or someone else in Walmart, they're saying the same thing about equity as the other person is, right? And the other piece is that we have common language. And one of the ways I explain equity is think about it right now, in the situation we're in right now with, with the pandemic. We're all going through this storm, right? And this, we're all in the ocean. We're all going through this storm. The storm is made up of COVID-19, racial injustices, economic strain, trauma. And that's the storm. And we're all in this ocean together. And so Tom may be in a ocean liner, so he's feeling the storm a little bit. Amanda may be in a yacht. And Monique may be in a traditional boat. And Rhonda may be in a rowboat. And someone else may be in a life raft, and I may be on a life preserver. But we're all in the ocean in the same storm, but we're feeling it differently. You can't use universal strategies to address the individual needs of people going through this storm. We all know this because you all have done work in equity that we've had other academic and other pandemics way before this. All the pandemic did, COVID-19, is exposed, the inequities in our education system, which many of us knew about. And so we have to make sure we have common language and common messaging in a very systemic way. And so I'm not really overly concerned about what's happened at one elementary school in Orange County. What we're looking for is themes and patterns in all your schools that bubbles up to the district to make sure the district is focusing on what you see some of the common things. We know all schools are different, but at the same time, it may be several things that all the schools are saying that they need. And so we do a very thorough, in-depth examination through the lens of equity to make, as I said before, to make sure that your vision, mission, your policy, your plan, your practice, your professional development, your resources are all aligned, okay, together, to make sure you're addressing it. Next slide, please. And so what are the liberals that we do all this work? That's really what happens is the works afterwards. After we, we paint the picture, and this is what we're doing around equity. And so equity and finance report, and I'm gonna let Tom talk about the finance part about this in a second. And education equity plan, I know that you all talked about you want to develop one. And someone mentioned, I can't remember who it was, an equity scorecard about being transparent. And that's what this equity scorecard does. You know, it's about transparency and transformation. And so the transparency part is, this is what we say we're going to do, people in the community. And this is somewhere on you all's website, so they can go to and see exactly what you said in your equity plan and see where you are on a regular basis. And so you always keep it updated. Because even though, you know, the one thing about the equity scorecard does is make sure that all this work we're doing is actually impacting and making a difference for children, right? And so the equity scorecard is about transparency and being transformative and moving the district forward. And, and we can often, you know, show you all how to help develop that. You're kind of doing it a little bit with the equity resolution, but it's not a metrics, doesn't have actually data there. The scorecard would actually have data there. So if you're saying that our Latinx males are going to improve are going to improve achieving by whatever, a percentage of whatever by twenty twenty-three, but you can gradually see where those students are on a regular basis. That's what the equity scorecard would look like. And you could, you would decide in what areas you may look uh or focus on. Like it may be discipline, achievement gaps, climate and culture and literacy. Let's say those are the main ones, not, not the only ones, but the main ones. And whatever you say you're going to focus on, it's there, it's transparent, and and people could see uh what you're doing uh on a regular basis. And then uh the finance, budgetary plan, and the finance and budget technical assistance, and all that. Tom, talk a little bit about that. And then I know I went to that pretty fast because already you all asked me questions, a little more organic than just reading this PowerPoint. Uh, Tom, you want to talk more about the finance part?
I'll think myself a little bit, uh but I'll start off in a comment to say that, you know, people um always said when I was younger, if you wanted to care, my priorities were you look at my checkbook or look at how I was spending my money and where it went. And that's what priorities or resources are. And it may or may not um align with my priorities are. And so from a stance review, you think about the fact that uh an accounting system or, you know, just looking specifically at financial statements, they're connected to a financial level, like yeah, school, department, or project, and may break uh expenditure data, my function or our financial systems are not set up to evaluate and report expenditure level based on the demographics of a split. And look at the student demographic, look at how you're spending your resources. That really tells you where your priorities are. Um, if you look at it from a kind of an industry example, if you think about it, whenever you were producing a, a product, and I'm not trying to quote a student to a product, if you'll follow me for a second, look and analyze what are the sources that are implemented and used in order uh to produce a particular product. Since every product, it takes a different amount of resources. My uh analogy I'm trying to make there is that if you look at students, um as Rob here with the, the storm, well, that he mentioned for COVID nineteen, um everyone's coming from a different spot. And for eliminate, eliminate academic disparities, we have to focus on how resources um are allocated. You know, our primary resources in a school district um are obviously our staff and faculty that spend the majority of our money. Um, but if you look at all resources and how they're allocated, um if they're not allocated on student need, then you may be um having objectives that don't align with how you're spending your money. And so you have to start off by building a budget that is structured around that need and based around uh what is needed for individual students. And so our focus is at first, how do you spend your money? To your goals and objectives. And if your goal uh is based around equity, one more uh uh analogy, but it might be considered, that came from um a district where I served as superintendent. My CFO in the district explained to me that, you know, what we typically try to do in schools is we say, well, if we want to allocate our resources, we look at it and say, well, everyone needs a new pair of shoes. And so we can allocate everyone a new pair of shoes. But if we want to really reach equity, uh we have to make sure everybody's shoes fit. And so when we're allocating the resources of our district, we have to make sure that they fit the need. And that you can then analyze that and tie that back equity scorecard and make sure that the budget is structured that way. If you think about a budget, a budget is nothing more than a plan. Uh, but if that plan is not structured in, in order for you to be able to evaluate your measurable objectives, it really doesn't have the purpose of helping you meet your goals and needs. And how, not only allocate, but how they're across district according to trying to meet an equity plan. Sure, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. Well, I know it goes kind of fast and I'd like to just uh open up for a conversation and go a little more detail, more specifics.
Thank you, Mr. Cleveland and Mr. Shelton both so much for presenting. Board members, do you have questions? Mr. Atherton?
Um, so thank you so much for coming tonight and presenting. Um, one of the things I want to say is I do want to make sure our families are included, and that was one of my first questions is I noticed on, I think it's page five, that it didn't have families on it, and want to make sure that we do get a good view of that community um and the perspective. And I'm very excited to hear about the equity scorecard because I agree, you can't do much without having those measurements. And I think that'll be great feeding back into what uh Dr. Keeling was talking about earlier about having that transparent measurement for all of us to see. So thank you so much for uh explaining how that would work.
You're welcome, sir.
Tom, sir?
Well, I, I have a bunch of questions. I really appreciate this and appreciate your thoughtfulness around a really important topic. So the first question is, as you pull the budgets together, um I think you know that North Carolina has the state, the state, local, federal. And um and we have, we do a lot of resource allocation based on which budget is going to come from. And I wonder if you're prepared to pull that together across those different you know, so, so we, we are, we do our budgeting almost based on fund accounting rather than resource. So that's something that you're familiar with. Well, let me keep going. That's number one. I, I also want to yeah, I have a very simple definition of equity, which is when you get to a point where demographics doesn't predict outcomes, right? Pretty simple. Um, and I think in our, you'll find when you look at our budget, that demographics also predicts resource allocation, which is a kind of a frightening situation. And when you look at our individual schools, you'll find that we have a series of Title One, um majority-minority schools. So which, you know, and my, my question is, are those schools getting the resources they need? And it could drill down into much as how much we're paying teachers at those schools. It may have the same number of people, but the salaries are different. Um, so my question is, will you be getting down to that kind of school level to look at those real resource disparities between our schools?
So um I could address a couple of different things. First of all, going back to original um about, you know, whether it's a federal, state, or low uh funding. Um, obviously, if you start with the, the federal sources are allocated based on particular criteria. Uh, generally, our largest uh federal funding sources are allocated based on poverty or disability. State-level funding, it varies slightly from state to state, but there's generally some level equity analysis built into a funding formula. For example, uh you may have a, a separate funding stream uh for students who live in poverty, uh students who are English-language learners, students who are with um exceptional needs, et cetera. And so uh we'll certainly look, um first of all, to answer your first question, we'll, we'll look at all of the funding sources and how they're allocated. Some of those are, of course, completely um have to be based on uh the law and what the, you know, the federal state law states. But we'll very particularly look uh within the school district uh to how you would allocate and the focus is it's not about comparing school versus school, because this is um a district level, but uh the idea will be to look at um how is the structure of the allocation formula to where it is the equity needs of a particular school, a particular program um within the district. And it could certainly um conversations that you might have amount of how allocations are made to particular schools. Um, speaking again, the, the number one um cost within an allocation is always staffing. It's actually in, in uh those districts spend seventy-five, if not eighty-five percent of their funds is in their staffing allocation. If you were a prince, depending on seniority and education level, it can have a huge impact on cost at a person level within school. And so um we won't be looking at what uh the state laws and requirements are on all the, the staffing, the individual district level, and how the district uh can to deal with this equity. Our focus will be around how to look at population and the first needs of the student population across demographics to make sure that um that you're trying uh least to make sure those minimum needs are met for all students. And then the priority needs for students who have special and specific needs. Address is your question, but I'm happy to.
If I just could follow, I just am a little confused as to how, I, how do you get from district to students without going to a school?
Sorry, could you say that again? I'm a little bit of trouble hearing you.
How do you go from district to student or student group without going through school? Because ultimately, our resources are allocated to schools. So how do we, how do you get there? I don't, I don't know how you do that.
So look at an individual uh student population, um which school it's at, you're looking at the student population. For example, students of color, students with special needs, students of poverty, students who are English-language learners, how they're distributed across your schools, what district um allocates uh students for a district um structures and um student attendance boundaries. It's not a specific thing that we would look at, but we would look at um, for example, students of color across your district um or uh funds alloc- courses allocated for students, or if there's um, you know, specific um academic disparity there. The same thing for students of special needs. I think to, to be able to look at a particular school, that this school, you know, one principal, one will be the other, we, it all the uh district entirely looks at a particular student demographic.
Other board members, Ms. Smiley?
Um, I have a couple of questions about the um sort of broader equity audit and then about the financial piece. So I'll ask the first ones and then see if other board members have questions before the second set. Um, the um, I am curious, so here's, here's what I want to make sure that this work does for us. Um, I think we have, over time, we have had different analyses and recommendations um that point out persistent differences in experience and outcomes for Black students and Latinx students and low-income students in the district. And so I just want to make sure that this um analysis is not going to, and no offense intended, um only tell us things we already know and that it's going to help us get to the next level beyond that of, um so, so um, and that it's going to get to the next level beyond that, so that the recommendation won't be, you should hire a more diverse teaching staff. Um, you need to address um literacy among, you know, in, in early elementary um for students of color, um things that we already know. Um, and so um I guess I'm curious um to hear more about um examples of the types of recommendations that you've made in these reports to districts in the past, especially ones who sort of are already aware of discipline disparities, academic disparities and, and things like that. How do you help them get to the next level? Um, what are some examples of those um themes or patterns that you might surface for a district as well as sort of the recommendations?
Okay, and Tom, you can hop in anytime you want to also. So yes, you all have an ideal already, exactly where your disparities are and things of that nature. So we can, example of maybe a discipline. And so as we talk to teachers and students and principals and district-level staff about uh discipline. And so we look at this, we realize there's an overrepresentation of males being suspended or a school suspension or whatever. But the information we gather, we, we see that. The question is, what's the story behind that? And so we realize that um you are, you have uh PBIS embedded in your, uh, you know, this one program, right? But it's not being implemented consistently. Um, we'll talk about de-escalation, how you approach that with students. So very specific, not just saying, hey, Sarah, you know, you have a large, a loose, a large gap in reading. Yes, you know that, but specific strategies around reading and literacy to address that. But mostly systemic things at the district level. So uh it may be that um you all talked about uh looking at the curriculum and specific strategies about making sure the curriculum is culture-responsive and looking at pedagogy and things of that nature. So it will be very specific about what you can do, not what you have. Right? And so it may be, you know, like I said, maybe issues around literacy. Let's say it's a let's say, uh, if you want a specific example, let's say rigor is an issue. And so we'll, we'll ask that, we figure out, we talk to teachers and students and eight out of thirteen schools are talking about, as we talk to them, rigor is an issue. So we'll say, have you all implemented uh for teachers depth of knowledge? And all three levels, and then find out that most of the time you have is always at level one or two. And so we'll ask a specific recommendation, we'll give a specific recommendation about how do we consistently have students at teachers at three or four around rigor and making sure students get access to rigor. So we won't just say that you have rigor issues, right? We'll specifically say that you all need to implement depth of knowledge throughout the entire district for teachers. Uh, so it'll be something like that, or, or discipline. We, we also may look at uh, let's say around uh discipline that we need to go deeper when we analyze discipline and look at subjective referrals versus objective referrals. And who's actually uh doing the referrals uh and what those referrals looking at. So we may look at the discipline data, we don't know why so many students are being suspended, or particularly males or males of color. And a lot of times it's because of subjective reasons. And what I mean by that is, or discretionary reasons, fail to follow rules, insubordination, which is always kind of questionable depending on who you ask, right? Or, or disrespect. But then objective reasons, we notice that other students have been suspended for fighting drugs, weapons, which is crystal clear. But there's a catch-all, just one issues around referrals for students of color. And I don't know if you all looked at that in deeply, like we would do that and make suggestions of how you need to address uh over representation, special education, or discipline, or what that may be. If, it's not going to come, it's not going to come back and just say that, Sarah, you have some discipline issues in your school.
If I could, if I could drive saying there, uh to me, it boils down to, to three things. One, we would, of course, analyze- One, we would, of course, analyze and then be able to quantify the issue. I already know the drought there, but we'll actually analyze and quantify those. Secondly, we would look at the systems and structures that needed to be in place to address those issues. And then, thirdly, we would focus on how you develop capacity in your district to where, you know, it's necessary for us to be those things to be able to monitor. Those accordingly, it would be a systemic structure to put in place where it would be done internally.
Thank you, that's helpful. Yeah, I think when I think about some of these areas, because there has been work been done over time, I imagine it could be really helpful. And I saw you had district conversation at the beginning, but I'm thinking about even around student discipline, some of the work that Ms. Cobb has led around, and I believe Mr. Johnson, around revising our student code of conduct. And, you know, there has been work to implement PBIS and restorative practices. And so I imagine, you know, finding out from staff members like that, like, what do you want to know about, like, about how that's going, you know? And so it might be asking questions that then get to that next level about actual, like, implementation of these things and just bring it to another level. But I imagine that we have probably staff members who could, better than I could, sort of identify what's that next level we need to know about in order to improve whatever it is that we're doing.
And the other thing, Sarah, is the other question is, is it systemic or do you have islands of excellence? That's what the piece that we're really looking for at the district level. You have, you know, consistently, or you have some really great things going on at like six or seven schools. How do you formalize that where it's across the board? Some of that is policy, right? And then like Tom says, some of that's structure. So we're looking like really systemic issues, structures, just not individual practices, right? But what are some things that are really going really well? You probably can name five or 10 right now, but it's not systemic and it's not formalized across the board. That's why it's a district level assessment and not individual schools. If that makes sense.
It does, and I'm glad that one of the things will be, it sounds like identifying some of those bright spots that we can learn from across the district. Because I do think that there are some really good things happening in places for us to learn from too.
Yeah, and so you can replicate that also, right?
That's exactly what Roger was saying there is, is that, you know, from our perspective, we will also, of course, identify the things that are going well in district, things that are being done well. And we would point those out, that it's very clear that those can be consistent. Mention systemic and systematic across the district. But I just wanted to re- re- get to the point of, you know, building capacity. You know, our district is that the capacity here, that this work is ongoing and sustainable. And that, you know, everyone in the district has the tools that they need. And that's why we specifically talked about building a budgeting mechanism. When I worked and talked with Rhonda, it's like, how did you build a budget that makes sure allocating resources on an equitable basis? And how do we measure against that from an ongoing basis? All of the procedures and tools do that.
Ms. Doyle?
Thank you for this presentation. So I have a question that maybe is a little bit repetitive, but ties, I think, together some things different people have said. So is my understanding correct that you'll, the desk audit is like looking at all those policies and practices on paper before you come to shape those interview questions? So that would capture some of what Ms. Smiley's mentioning, like our student code of conduct and work we've already done. And then if you're looking during your assessment part and your focus groups, when you're seeing what isn't, isn't happening at the different schools, does that get to Ms. Hauser's question a little bit as well? Like, maybe you'll see that we've made improvement in implementing restorative practices in our elementary schools, but not our middle schools, or four of our elementary schools, but not all seven. Are those the type of student level analysis or school level, excuse me, kind of clarity that we will see?
Yes, exactly. And also to see, you know, if everyone's on the same page at the school level and the district level. For example, let's say one of the resolutions is looking at culture responsive teaching and things of that nature. And let's say we, what the survey has a question around culture responsive teaching. And thirty percent of the teachers say, I don't know what you're talking about. And then we go to interview them and then forty-five percent can't really define what that is, what it looks like in the classroom. But we have an initiative where we put the resources and time into that, or vice versa. We know what it is, we're doing it, and we're doing it on a regular basis. And we'd say, oh, this is, you know, we see this out of ten of thirteen schools, this is a good thing, right? So the desk audit helps us get to those kind of questions, right? And it helps us kind of formalize the the survey and the interview questions. So you have alignment, so the triangulation is really important. So Carrie can tell me, you know, at a school and I'm interviewing you, that, you know, we don't have a lot of support around equity from the central office. And Carrie is the only person that says that, or even five people say that. You know, we never hear that again, we don't see it in the survey, we don't hear interviews, we don't see it. We're not going to put that in a report because that's probably Carrie's opinion. You know, it may be true that particular area in her classroom or whatever in the school, but that wouldn't be a district finding, right? That'd be someone's opinion. And also a part of the report is no names are mentioned, no schools are mentioned, any of that stuff, right? So to get back to your point, yes, a lot of things that Sarah was asking, we'll give some of that through the desk, the document reviews.
Ms. Hauser?
This is really helpful. And I wondered if you you might be able to, in a very simple way, kind of describe a traditional budgeting, a campaign kind of budget process versus an equity budget process? And what you might envision for just a really simple, simple idea of how those two different budget processes might work?
So the, to the question we had earlier, I'll start here. Typical what happened at a school this, is we look at the overall student population of the school and have a staffing formula that determines the number of teachers that need, the number of administrators that support that. Some form of driven means shows we might get for instructional slots and materials for professional and that. Basically based, that we really look in a general budget is to how is, okay, if a school has five hundred, first, the school has, how many teachers do they get? And how many instructors they get in that print accordingly? Obviously, when you get up into the secondary level, that change is a little bit based maybe on programs. As the expectation for a classroom. So if you want to compare that to an N base audit, you break that student population down to a very granular level within each school. And has a particular program that's housed there, if they have a large number in a particular gap area there. But you you build in the criteria of what you say that you want to deal with as a board and as a district from an equity perspective. Those are the real academic disparities are. So if you had a school that population had more students that were in an academic need area, then there would be an adjustment made to deal with the equity issue of that particular need. The most glaring one that generally happens in most districts we work with is the poverty piece, which you mentioned earlier specifically from a federal standpoint. Well, you know, there's Title I allocations, the PIS allocation, some poverty. But generally, there's not a specific separation or a specific separate allocation that's made for poverty. And poverty, of course, is the number one barrier that most students face. The core hits very strongly with academic achievement. It's not causational, as we know, it's certainly correlational. And so we will what are the academic equity issues that you're specific to address? A budget formula to allow the district to be able to address that at a school level or a program level. I hope that answers it, but I'm happy to go further if you want.
That's really, really helpful. I mean, I, I, I think it's down, just what the doctor ordered. You're about, you're about a month or two late because we're in our budget process now. And it would have been kind of fun, I don't know if we could get this year's budget in this time or place. This sounds really interesting to me.
Ms. Smiley?
Sorry, were you done, Bonnie? Okay, sorry, it's a little hard to hear you, but, okay. And so one thing I wanted to flag about the finance piece, just for you all to be aware of, is, Bonnie mentioned this, how unique, like North Carolina's funding model from this, from the state, I think is unique in the United States. I don't think any other states do do it exactly this way. So the state provides, relative to other states, a bigger share of district funding, and they allocate it in really specific categories. And used to allow decent flexibility in moving the money around across categories, but there's very limited give in that right now. So that means that what we receive from the state is just really hardcoded to different uses, instructional materials or CTE programs or what have you. So I think I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that because I think where we have the greatest flexibility with our dollars is the local money because the federal money is also really specific. So that will be in terms of like actually the district being able to operationalize this. I think that's a good piece just to be aware of.
So I thank you for that, and not to compare states anyway, but Carolina's formula had basis in what was in the Kentucky Form Act in T ninety, when our funding formula was created, it's called the SEEK formula, it supported excellence in Kentucky form. Very specific to the buckets and how it's allocated. And so both in my research and my doctorate as well as my work in school districts, I've looked at school district formulas and that. And I know they're, this is North Carolina, but they're very similar to what we've seen here in Kentucky. But we compare that and make sure we consider that in our conversation, our findings and our report.
That's great, thank you. Sorry, did somebody else have something, Hillary?
I see Ms. Hauser raising her hand. I do want to just keep time in mind, we still have a full agenda after this. I don't want to, you know, it's very important and it's it's hard to mention time when we're talking about important stuff. But I do think we need to sort of wrap up with final thoughts from the board. So Ms. Hauser, you, you go, and then Ms. Smiley, if you have more thoughts, maybe after that.
Dr. Shelton, just to to your point, you know, it would seem to me that, you know, because we do end up building our budget based on all the accounting, but I'm hearing you say that you'll be able to help us cross-reference our equity needs back to the state or local accounting process. So you'll be looking at the entire budget and federal too. We'll be looking at the entire budget from an equity perspective and then link it back to the different funding sources. Is that fair?
Yes and no. I hesitate. This is, the board has some policy issues that they obviously have to discuss, which I'm pretty disgusted over. But starting with the federal fund, you know, let's, let's just use Taiwan. And what is your target focus area there? You know, some districts look at just based on, purely on the poverty count within schools. Some districts talk that money to elementary to get it to early childhood needs. So that's your question. But what we would say to you is, is you'll have to examine those conversations as a board to say where you do have some discretion and where you do have some target needs that the board believes are most evident. Work with the superintendent and the staff, make those appropriate policy. The state level, you know, one of the things that we we think a lot about at the state level is that the staffing is actually allocated to the district, district out of the school. And so there is generally a little more flexibility there than we realize. And we'll examine those possibilities and share that. But again, a conversation where the board, how do we, our flexibility there to make sure, it could indicate that you need to have a conversation about what class sizes. I hate to bring that up, I'm a teacher, don't hear that. But that may be a conversation for needs to have. But in our, in our role and our report, we'll give you the data, the tools and the analysis. But we leave those conversations up up to the board and to the district.
Thank you, Dr. Shelton. Ms. Smiley, did you want to wrap us up here?
Yes, that's, that's great. And that Title I example, so you'll, you'll surface those examples to us of places where the board or has a policy decision around how we allocate. That's great. And I'm sure that Ms. Rath will, okay, I'm sure Ms. Rath will would have shared this at whatever point we do this. But we also have state laws limiting class sizes in certain grades. We have various constraints impacting our flexibility. My thought is, I, I would, I know that this is on the agenda tonight for approval. I would love to approve the final contract with hopefully a little bit more detail about what is included in this, in the financial analysis piece in particular. So the, you know, the, I think what we're, I'm hearing is it would not necessarily give, answer the question of how equitably are resources allocated now in terms of the actual school by school per pupil spending? But that it would answer, where are the, like, big district decisions, the levers we have for influencing equitable allocation? And what is a model or what are some models for equitable resource allocation or equitable budgeting? And sort of a set of recommendations around that. So first, is that, is that right, that that's what you all would be providing? Did I miss anything?
No. And I want to be very clear. Don't compare one school versus another. This is a district level audit. We're, the demographics you know, are either allocated districted or school. Not to, so for example, you know, a school that has a higher number of students in poverty made for that school, that's something that we're at, how the expenditures are made for students in poverty and where are at, how the expenditures are made for students in poverty and where are issues. Um, but we won't compare one school versus the other. I just want to be clear about that.
Thank you. Yeah, and I mean, I think for what it's worth, I I do think, you know, as a board, we should look at that as a as a ultimately, even if it's outside of the scope of this work, but um that what you're talking about about more broadly, how do we allocate resources? What I really appreciate about that is that it is sort of hard codes into how we allocate money. You know, if we do redistricting, like it, we will more equitably allocate resources rather than looking at a point in time and shuffling stuff around one time. It sort of allows us to in an ongoing basis um allocate resources more equitably.
Absolutely. Better when when I I always love to hear a board when they're talking about, and I don't know how often you with the superintendent looking at your district boundaries, but anytime you're looking at uh the population of the school and its related demographic, um, the resources adjusted accordingly based on the needs within families uh and in the same speak, but you're you're looking at what uh are the needs of the students based on the the new boundary to a district structure and lines that you're creating. Um, resources should always follow the students and the related needs.
Thank you.
So um, Ms. Smiley, I I hear that you're wanting to see a little bit more detail in the contract. I wonder how the board would feel about um sort of tabling the vote for tonight, but adding this to the consent agenda with the contract update for the next meeting. Thoughts about that? Ms. Hauser?
I would be fine with that. I would like to, as far as more detail, we could get a sample of an equity report card. Um, just would like to just see what that deliverable might look like. Um, you know, from what I've heard is I was there with Ms. Smiley. I would love to do this resource evaluation. I think we need to do that, but this project could take us down an important step. It starts to move us down an important process of budgeting from an equity perspective rather than from a resource perspective. But I think we need to take that step. It skips an important step, then Ms. Smiley works. But I would be completely okay with your proposal.
Other board members, maybe thumbs up or thumbs down?
Yeah, I agree with that. I agree with the recommendation Vera has.
Any other thoughts before we wrap this conversation up? Dr. Felder. Okay, well, Dr. Shelton and um Dr. Cleveland, thank you so much for being here tonight. It was incredibly informative to be able to talk through these issues with you. And um, I think that I can speak for the board that we are excited to work with you all.
All right, thank you all for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much, we will do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
So the the next item on our agenda is um the post-school renaming process and timeline. And I believe Ms. Dubison will be walking us through that.
Mrs. Mackenzie? Actually, I'm going to walk us through if that's okay.
Absolutely, excuse me.
No, 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 it's fine, no worries. Uh, Ms. Dubison is welcome to chime in and I'm sure she won't hesitate to uh if needed. And so uh, as shared earlier in this presentation, action item eleven in the board's equity resolution uh calls for the review of the names of buildings in our district to examine their origin and compliance with the district's equity power. That would be policy ten thirty. At the board's February eighth and twenty second meetings, the board voted to change the names of two schools, Cameron Park Elementary and CW Stanford Building School. Tonight, the process and timeline for renaming both schools is being presented to the uh for the board's feedback and action so staff can move forward with all deliberate speed with the neat renaming process in an effort to identify and have names approved in time for the start of next school year, if at all possible. So I'm going to ask um Ms. Bunch to uh click on the link at the top of the page. Uh, board members, you have seen this document um as part of your weekly update. I have no intentions of reading it line by line, uh but would like to highlight a few things. So this is a four-step, what's being proposed is a four-step process that would begin this month. Um, and highlights of each step are as follows. Uh, so step one would occur March, April. It involves publicizing the opportunity to serve on this uh school uh renaming committee. Each school would have its own uh renaming committee. Uh, so we want to publicize that and how uh one uh uh can uh apply to be part of that committee as well as the process for submitting names for consideration. Um, highlight of step two, which would begin April slash May, is uh the formation of a broad, richly diverse school renaming uh committees at each school and a series of meetings to review and research submissions following all guidelines that outline in board policy nine ninety-three hundred, uh naming, which is naming facilities and memorials. Uh, step two also includes committees presenting two to three options to the board and the board acting one name for each school. Uh, highlight of step three, which would be May to June, uh is communicating new names widely to include the research and rationale. And last but not least, um, step four, which would be June, July, focuses on changing school names on school buildings, marquees, et cetera. So that's a very high level overview of the process. Um, any questions? Thoughts, feedback? Uh, Ms. Dubison, I don't know if you want to chime in, but feel free to, this is certainly based on and and it's inclusive of what you shared at the last meeting.
Yes, um, no, I think this looks great. The um, you know, the board just will need to give some direction as far as the policy about naming after a person so that they know how to advise the committees on that.
Ms. Smiley, I saw your hand up.
Um, I just wanted to say that I really like this process very much. Um, and um, my hope is that the um renaming committees wouldn't have to meet. It it wouldn't take excessive amounts of time for them to meet, but that we would um maybe give if the principals are facilitating those, um, maybe give them um some suggested um protocols for, you know, taking a long list of names and a bunch of committee numbers and figuring out which one sort of rise to the top um to like narrow it down, some like protocols to help them not have it be endless sets of meetings. Thank you, Ms. Smiley.
Other thoughts from the board? Um, Ms. Doyle and then Ms. Hauser?
I was just going to say that I all think it looks really good to me and I appreciate the thought that went into it.
And I also, I like um, I like the plan, especially the authority that's been given to the principals and to the schools. I'm just not comfortable with the timing, especially given the challenges that our schools are facing with the opening. You know, our teachers are already exhausted and overwhelmed. They've not been vaccinated. Um, they're just starting under Plan B. Um, we have not put together our plans for summer school. Um, people want to know what we're doing as far as going back to school full time. So I just don't know how we could ask our schools to take this on now. And I can't help but add that Stanford doesn't even have a permanent principal. So I support the process fully, but I'd like us to delay it until schools are fully reopened.
Mr. Atherton?
Um, I have to share the same sentiment. Um, you know, we're in an academic crisis, the student learning law, family needs, the very, very exhausted staff. Um, I just feel like it's shouldn't be a priority right now for us to rename the schools. Um, especially when we're going to ask our principals, teachers, non-classified, classified district staff and others who are working on this, when there's so many needs right now for the students and staff right now. But I do like the layout of the plan. Uh, I think it's very well thought out. I think the steps and the process is going to help us be very transparent about it.
Um, Dr. Felder, do you have thoughts about this? Because you and I have had some conversations about timing with this. Um, certainly, the board unanimously approved our resolution where we were going to examine school names at the beginning of this year. So I just um wonder if you could share your thoughts about timing and staff capacity and um, what, I mean, uh, my impression was that you felt good about moving forward with this. And so um, anything you could share with us would be helpful.
Uh, sure, uh, thank you, Mrs. Mackenzie. So um, I certainly agree, you know, that um you know, this is a very stressful, difficult time for staff. Uh, but I don't know that it will be any less stressful or difficult um into the early part of next year. Uh, and I would also say that um what I didn't highlight, uh, but it's in the plan, uh, the time, the process and timeline is that, you know, central office will be supporting the school. So it wouldn't be as if uh the schools would be left to their own uh measures. Where we will be there supporting them all the way. That's been communicated to the leaders of both schools. Um, also looking to provide support by way of temporary terminating contracts. Uh, if uh schools need to uh uh provide a stipend to staff to participate, uh, looking to uh offer that as well. So uh, I I and to Ms. Smiley's point, I don't, I don't foresee it being, you know, multiple meetings. Uh, we are going to develop, we're working on a charge statement that the district is providing that. We're working on um guidelines. District staff will be part of the meetings. Uh, so we plan to lift this together. And um, again, if we wait until the fall, it's it's still a stressful time. Um, I I don't know that any time will be the right time, uh so to speak. Uh, but I do think by providing support and doing it together, uh, this is something that we can uh um, complete in an expeditious uh manner. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Dr. Felder. Other board members?
Well, Chair, can I say, I'd like to to thank uh staff for and pulling together this proposed timeline and the process for renaming. They did a lot of work and I appreciate it and it's thorough.
Ms. Smiley?
Um, I just want to say, I think that this could be a fun little thing to do. I know there's a lot of work associated with, you know, then what happens, but I think it could be a positive thing. Um, so if if this is for action, I'm happy to move um approval of the process and timeline.
I have a motion for Ms. Smiley, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion for Ms. Smiley and a second for Ms. Stevens, Mr. Atherton?
No.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
No.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens? The motion is approved. Thank you all very much. Um, Ms. uh Dubison, was there anything else we needed to discuss before we move on?
Well, I just noted that, you know, part of the process that's outlined here is that the committees would be instructed on the requirements of policy. And so if you want the committees to consider names that include the names of people, they probably need some direction on that point.
So is that something we would need to like vote on or is it because, I mean, I think that we had this conversation at the last meeting and there was, I I don't know that we took a poll of how many people were interested, but there was at least some support of like, we would consider names. Not that we would definitely choose a person's name, but that we were willing to accept them. Um, so is that something we need to vote on like as a possibility? Or is it just sort of a general consensus?
Um, if if you guys feel like you're comfortable that you have consensus on that point and the administration feels like they, you know, can instruct the committees in that that realm, I think that's fine. There would still need to be a motion at the time of choosing the name.
Sure.
To waive the policy. Um,
Well, I mean, we could either do a formal vote or a thumbs up, like we're willing to consider it sort of a thing. I mean, certainly it comes, in the end, we'll have to still vote at the time of choosing a name. If we did go with a person's name, we'd have to have five votes to waive the policy.
Right.
Um,
I guess perhaps if there are not objections to allowing the committees to consider such names, that would be, I think, good for the administration to know as they give them their protocols.
Board, is everyone okay considering names, concerns? Okay, well, I'm gonna, unless, okay, Ms. Hauser?
I just have a question, you know, we have a policy that we don't name schools after people. And then there's um other policies, not ours, that if we name schools after or building after people, there's a question about whether we name them after people who are alive or people who are no longer alive. And um, so, you know, I think rather than just opening it up, I think we should probably have a policy conversation because I don't think it's that simple as having the community telling them they can go ahead and and use names and then we come back and say this is really not okay. So right now, our policy is names are not allowed. I think that's we should, that could be discarded. You know, if they feel strongly, they'd like to use somebody's name, let them come back out.
Yeah, I'm kind of having a hard time hearing everything you're saying, but I heard sort of the nutshell version of it. Um, the policy committee was comfortable hearing nominations and waiving the policy if the schools bring forward names that we wanted to pursue. So I mean, maybe what, maybe it's best to have a vote about whether we want to consider names or not because that would be, that would at least provide some clarity. So I guess I'll just, um, this is not about whether we will name it after a person. This is, do we want to accept nominations of any name? And in the schools, of course, will go through it and make recommendations to us. Are we comfortable with considering names? Is there a motion for that or get, you know, or against it, whatever?
Sure, I'll move to um leave that possibility open as we're accepting uh suggestions for renaming the schools.
I'll second that.
Eva, was that clear enough? Okay.
I think we got it, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion for Ms. Smiley and a second for Ms. Doyle, Ms. Hauser?
I don't know, you know, I don't have any. I don't have any information to make a decision on that because I don't know why we have a policy of not allowing names. And so I don't know what it means to open it up. We suppose we could have that conversation later. So maybe, I I just don't know what it means.
Okay, got it. Ms. Mr. Atherton?
So just uh for discussion of the motion, um, so we're not, this is not to waive So we're not, this is not to waive the policy. This is just saying that the committee can consider it, but we're not putting any boundaries around it, that living, dead, or something like that. We're just saying it's okay to have that consideration. Is that what we're saying?
That, yes. And if we decided we wanted to pursue a person's name, when we get to that point, we would still have to vote to waive policy. Is that correct, Eva? Ms. Dubson?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarity. Ms. Hauser?
Will the committee be told that our current policy is that we do not name schools after people? So will they be informed of that?
And they will be informed, if this vote, if this motion passes, they would be informed of the policy and that we are open to considering names and that it would have to be waived if we pursued the name of a person. Any other thoughts before I call the rest of the vote? Okay, I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
No.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
The motion passes, so we will consider nominations of pretty much anyone, people, places, things. We will just open the nominations up and the schools will process that and we will, we will work through it. Thank you, everyone.
Point of order?
Yes, Mr. Atherton?
I don't think Bonnie actually voted.
Good. Did you not?
I didn't actually vote. I didn't actually.
I thought you said no. You said no before you gave your comment. But if, I mean, if you would like to formally vote, please, I misunderstood.
I'll formally vote no.
Okay. Very good. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, everyone. The next item on our agenda is Plan B updates.
Thank you, Mrs. McKenzie. So this slide outlines the Plan B updates that will be shared with the board tonight. However, before we begin sharing updates on Plan B, I'd like to take a moment to speak to Plan A. Let me begin by saying a formal presentation regarding recommendations for when the district and how the district should shift to Plan B will not be shared tonight. Rather, one will be shared at the March 22 board meeting. So that's in two weeks. In the meantime, it's important to note that while there is a very strong data from school districts in a number of states, including right here in North Carolina, that supports Plan A, at least at the elementary level, our local medical and health experts continue to advise the district to take gradual incremental steps towards Plan A. In other words, shifting from Plan C to Plan A without having spent time in Plan B is not advised. The district's shift to Plan B officially began today. It is incredibly important for staff and students to have time to adjust to teaching and learning in Plan B, as well as to ensure the district's mitigation measures and strategies work with more people in school buildings. So at the March 22 board meeting, I will make a recommendation to the board regarding when and how the district should shift to Plan A to include data and information that will be shared by, and an opportunity for the board to engage with the ABC Science Collaborative. Now, let's focus our current, on our current plan, and that's Plan B. Kicking off our Plan B updates would be Ms. Eva Dubson, our board attorney. Ms. Dubson will provide an update on Senate Bills 38 and 87. Ms. Dubson?
Thank you. Board members, there really hasn't been no movement on Senate Bill 37 since we last spoke. In that, which I think was the last update I provided, the Senate vote to override the governor's veto failed. They then later passed a motion to reconsider that vote, but the second vote has not been scheduled. And by Senate rules, they, the leadership would need to provide at least 24 hours' notice of that vote. And so just checking tonight, because they did convene briefly tonight, but it's not been on the agenda. So right now, that's where that stands, is a vote could be called at any time, but it has not yet. Senate Bill 78, which was an alternative reopening bill, has not made any movement and remains in committee, does not seem to be moving forward. A bill to watch where we said 87, I think, I think that's referencing House Bill 82, which is the requirement for summer school, a summer learning requirement for school districts. And is that the one? Yeah, okay. And that did pass the House unanimously, not just bipartisan, but a unanimous vote, and is now in the Senate. And that bill would require each school system to offer a, what they're calling a school extension, learning, recovery, and enrichment program in person for grades K through 12 this summer. It would have to be a pretty extensive program. The requirement is 150 hours or 30 days of instructional time. And instructional hours, 150 hours does not include lunch, recess, things like that. And must, there's a, it's a fairly detailed bill. It must include meals, physical activity, reading and math, and science. And for high school, in-person instruction and EOC courses and credit recovery. There has to be some enrichments or electives offered. And for grades K through eight, there must be benchmark assessments administered. So the requirement is that it be offered for at-risk students, students identified as at of failure or not being promoted. And then students who don't miss that, don't meet that criteria would be invited if space is available. And it would be voluntary for students, but there is some language in the bill about students facing retention and how they could avoid retention by coming to this program. There is no funding attached to this bill. Rather, the intent is that, or the stated intent is that districts would use the COVID relief funds already allocated, both at the state and the federal level. And it provides that teachers who work in this program would be employed under temporary contracts, which would not involve accruing leave or retirement contributions. It does allow the rehiring of retirees without having to wait a six-month waiting period. They could be rehired after one month. So that certainly seemed, certainly flew through the House and we will look for it to be placed on the agenda of the Senate. Then, in the meantime, last week, we did receive new guidance from DHHS and the State Board of Education in the form of a new strong schools toolkit, as well as a resolution from the State Board of Education. And taken together, the main message from both of those is that schools should return to in-person instruction for all grades. That, as has been the case, Plan A is an option for the elementary grades, but not for grades 6 through 12. They are still required to implement Plan B, meaning the six feet of social distancing in classrooms, on buses, which is generally where we get into the cohort rotations in order to be able to implement that. As always, the toolkit and the State Board as well, they don't define Plan A or B in terms of a number of days or a type of rotation, but rather it's what schedule does your district need in order to implement these social distancing requirements? The State Board has set a deadline of March 31, stating that the in-person instruction K through 12 needs to be offered by March 31. Any questions about that or anything, Dr. Felder, that I have missed?
Hauser?
I think you covered everything. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have two questions. One is because presuming SC 37 doesn't pass that. But that, the difference between what we're doing now and SC 37 is they would force us to bring our kids with IEP and FIBO four plans back under Plan A. Is that, that's correct?
That, yes, that was part of Senate Bill 37, yes.
Okay, so hopefully that's not going to be happening. Summer school, does summer school have to be entirely in-person?
It says in-person instruction, yes. It's certainly, I haven't parsed whether it, you know, whether there may be some wiggle room there. I think it does, at the high school level, talk about in-person instruction for EOC courses and also credit recovery, which I took to imply that they understand credit recovery may not be in-person. And generally, it isn't. But yes, it talks about in-person and in-person instructional day.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that?
Yeah.
That would not preclude us from, if we offered in-person to everyone, it wouldn't preclude us from also having a virtual option if we wanted to, would it?
No, I don't think so. And, and the requirement is that you offer the in-person for students identified as at-risk. So that's, that's sort of the number of spaces that you're required to have.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Dubson.
Okay, so thank you again, Ms. Dubson. And so we're going to continue on with our Plan B updates. So for the past two weeks, students in grades 2 to 12 opting for in-person learning have been in Plan B orientation. And today, today marked their first official day of Plan B. I am sure inquiring minds want to know how things are going in Plan B. Well, we could think no better way to share than to hear the perspectives, reflections, and experiences about returning to in-person learning than to hear from our students, staff, and parents of students opting for Plan B at the elementary, middle, and high school level. So we have a very short video. I will tell you, while Ms. Bunch is teeing it up, I can tell you that we had literally a couple of hours' worth of video footage when we put the word out that we wanted to get different perspectives. There was no end of sharing of staff, students, and families wanting to share. However, we had to cut it back and dial it back to a little under 10 minutes. And so while we couldn't hear from everyone, I want to start with a big thank you to all the students, staff, and parents who contribute to the larger video. Hopefully, we can get the whole video posted at some point. But we certainly want to thank everyone who contributed to the larger video as well as this small segment. So with that, Ms. Bunch?
Okay, may I please get everyone to mute?
All right, so again, a big thank you to all of the students, staff, and parents, uh, who contributed to the larger video and to this segment. Per their feedback, I think it's safe to say that Plan B is off to a great start at Orange County Schools. Uh, so now I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Cobb, who will provide an update on vaccinations. So, Ms. Cobb?
Good evening again, everyone. Um, the OCS, um, we have been working really hard with our community partners, um, in order to provide an opportunity for staff, um, throughout our district to receive the COVID-19 vaccination, um, if they are in favor of that or would like to have that. Please keep in mind that OCS is not requiring that any staff get vaccinated. We just want to really work hard to provide that opportunity for those staff who would feel much safer having that vaccination. Um, below you see listed some of the community partners that we have worked with, um, Hillsborough Pharmacy, Alliance Health, um, through Chapel Hill Carver City Schools, UNC Health, the Orange County Health Department, and Piedmont Health, to name a few. Um, to date, we have, uh, we know that there have been over 700 Orange County School employees that have, um, accepted the opportunity and have received at least the first part of the vaccination through one of the above-listed, um, organizations. We did do, um, a randomization, and through that randomization, we had over 600 staff that signed up, um, for that randomized lottery, and we will be holding our second clinic through that randomized lottery, um, this Friday coming up. And we also did a high-priority list, which we helped, um, uh, Orange County Health Department, took that list and, um, provided, um, vaccinations for staff through that. Um, we will continue to work with our community partners to offer as many opportunities as we can. Note that sometimes they become available like 24 hours or sometimes less, um, and soon as we know, we let the staff know so that we can get them signed up. So we just want to keep doing that and provide that opportunity to the staff. Are there questions?
I can't see everyone right now, so please jump in there if you have a question, everyone.
So Ms. Cobb, I want to first say thank you to everyone involved with helping our teachers get vaccinations and find vaccinations. I know it's been very frustrating for all involved to just try to move this forward. But the question I have is, I, I know from you saying we've had over 700, um, vaccinated, do we know what the gap is between that 700 and how many still need to get vaccinated?
At this time, we don't know that, um, Mr. Atherton, and that is because we are not asking staff. So some staff have taken, you know, on their own, gone out and gotten the vaccination. We only know this number because that is the number of people that we know that signed up between the, um, lottery and the high-priority list. Um, so we don't know a number. I have asked, um, at the Alliance, um, just to find out like how many they can estimate, um, that they have, um, actually given the vaccination from, that are from our district, and I have not received my, um, reply yet.
Well, I just, I, I just have to say thank you for all who are helping with this. I know it's so needed, and any effort we can do to help teachers identify places to get vaccinated, I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Ms. Hauser?
I, I just want to echo that, you know, thanks for getting people vaccinated. If I remember from your notices, some are two-dose and some are one-dose J&amp;J. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Um, when, um, the Johnson &amp; Johnson became available, UNC let us know, and they did a, um, appointment listing, and so some staff did sign up for that. The ones that we had three prior to that, in the two-dose.
So, so my question is, do you have a projection of when our staff will feel like they're vaccinated? That, that we could take that off our check, our to-do list?
I, I don't have a projection, um, Ms. Hauser. I can say some staff feel like that now because they've already had it, um, but we do still have some staff that are, um, that, you know, prefer not to have the vaccination, and we do understand and respect that as well. Um, but, um, some staff feel, um, pretty good because they've been vaccinated, and I will say I'm one of those, even though it wasn't a great, but I still feel that.
Ms. Doyle?
Um, sorry, thank you, Ms. Cobb. Sort of a qual- like qualitative version of Will's question a little bit. Are you seeing, I, I'm imagining that initially you were just flooded with staff saying they weren't able to get vaccinated, but, you know, they're still scrambling to find a place to get vaccinated. Are you seeing like that, um, kind of qualitative, um, sense of how many staff haven't been able to, because I know it's such a pass, patchwork, and people are finding places all over the place. Are you seeing the, uh, a sense of not quite as many people unable to find a spot, like, um, and, and you mentioned that people have signed up. A lot of those are also, like, they're signing up, but then they also might get it somewhere else before that even becomes available. Is that correct? Like, are you seeing a change in the overall picture a little bit in terms of, um, proportion of staff who's still looking?
Yes, so, um, as a part of what, when we did the lottery as well as the high-priority list, we created a email for staff to be able to respond to, and so we've gotten quite a few of the staff that are on the lottery list, um, and the high-priority list, that have been emailing saying, "Thank you so much for this opportunity, but I got it somewhere else." Um, and it wasn't through us, it was, you know, in their hometown or, you know, in another community from the pharmacy or what have you. So we've seen more people responding. Um, I sent an email out for the second round, um, and I've already gotten back over 15 people saying, "Thank you so much," but I've already gotten my first one. So we'll continue to move down the list as we receive those, um, names back or those comments back.
That's great to hear. Anyone else? Okay, I think we'll keep it moving.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. Um, I'd like to share some additional information with regards to the impacts of staff and how we further, um, provide support to our staff who are elected to get vaccinations. So we are offering, um, vaccination leave and coverage options to staff. So staff at schools and other work sites are working with their supervisors to provide coverage, so staff members don't have to take leave. We're also allowing staff to use leave if needed, and, um, we're going to ask the board for approval to use our local leave option for any employee who's having an adverse reaction, um, if they don't have leave, to allow them to, um, access the local leave option. And so, uh, we feel very excited and thankful to Ms. Cobb for the vaccination op- uh, opportunities that the district is making available. Um, our principals and supervisors, um, continue to work with their staff to, um, let staff know when, um, vaccinations are available. As Ms. Cobb mentioned, sometime it's on a short notice, but we are working with our staff and, um, just anecdotally with the ADA staff members that I'm working with, um, individually, they are, um, giving me feedback about how they're accessing the vaccinations as well. So I feel really comfortable, um, about the direction that we're going, uh, with regard to, um, supporting our staff who elect to get vaccinations. The other update that I wanted to share with you at, tonight, is regarding our staffing update. With regards to elementary, uh, we have one elementary classroom vacancy, two non-classroom vacancies, and one is a partial vacancies. I'll just call your attention to the AIG. Uh, we did fill 40% of that position, and so we're still continuing to interview and work with the principal around the 60% portion of that split position. With regards to middle school openings, uh, we have several vacancies listed, but we're also, um, identifying staff who, um, are committing to us and want to be recommended for next year. So right now, there may be a certified, um, sub in the room, but we are vetting, um, candidates for next year as well. So with the sixth-grade math position at Grabley Hill Middle, the seventh-grade ELA at Grabley Hill Middle, uh, we, the principal has already identified, uh, candidate, but the candidate can't start until, uh, next school year. On the same note, with regards to our EC position at ALS, again, the principal has already identified the candidate for next year, and we have a certified sub in the classroom. With regards to high school openings, we have one math teacher, um, that, um, has already submitted their retirement paperwork, and we're working with the principal with regards to that vacancy, and we have an additional math teacher vacancy that, again, we have a retired math teacher serving in that position until we can hire someone full-time. Um, lastly, uh, with the non-classroom EC teacher position, again, we're happy to say that we've already identified the teacher for next year, and so we have, um, a substitute in the class. And so, um, a process that we will be bringing to you to get the recommendations for all of these folks that I just mentioned are, um, using a, um, early contract. So through the early contract process, we can, uh, solicit approval from the board, um, for these folks to start for next school year. Um, another position that I just wanted to give you, um, an update on is regarding our classified positions. As you know, uh, we are recruiting for the disinfectant technicians and the COVID captains. It has been slow. Um, I believe, um, we did have one recommendation for one of the disinfectant technicians, uh, that was approved tonight. Uh, what we're doing, we're also reaching out to some of the, uh, temporary services to, um, use them to help recruit for those, uh, positions too. So that would be for the COVID captains as well as the disinfectant technicians. So we're hopeful that, um, at the next meeting, uh, we'll be able to bring you an update with regards to temps that will supporting, um, those two, uh, types of positions.
I would like to take an opportunity to, uh, interject here. If you will recall, Ms. Cunningham-Brown had mentioned during the va- vaccine leave and coverage that, um, we were looking for board approval on an item. So, um, if you will recall, December the 14th, the board approved a local leave option for staff unable to work remotely and experiencing COVID-like symptoms. The district has been working diligently to ensure that all other applicable leave is exhausted, such as contagious disease leave. And as a result, this local leave has not been needed at the level that funding was approved. Therefore, we would like board approval to use this local leave option for staff wishing to be vaccinated and not having sick leave to do so.
Um, Ms., Mr. Atherton, and then Ms. Smiley?
So I had a, a question about the, the staffing, uh, before the vaccine budget. The EC position at New Hope, um, I thought that's been on here a while, is, are we closer to a candidate?
Um, hello, Mr. Atherton and board. Good evening, everyone. Um, I have been working with, um, Ms. Wilson, and yes, we, we have, um, that position has been on the, uh, report for quite a bit. She is looking for a candidate that meets the requirements, um, of what she is looking for, as well as, um, someone who has the, the certification. So teachers with the adapted certification, um, are somewhat difficult to find. We are looking at, um, a few candidates. We have, uh, she has interviewed and is, um, waiting for a second interview for that candidate. So I will be following up with her this week to see where we are in that process.
Excellent, thank you. And the other, what I had, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Atherton, it's okay. I thought you were done.
No, the, the only other thing I was going to say is on the, the, uh, vaccine leave, um, we'll support it. I think it's the right thing to do to help out, and heard many cases of people, you know, being sick from the first one and then the second one.
Thank you. Smiley, did you want to comment?
I know the hour is getting late, so I was just going to motion to, um, allow, approve this.
Great, I have a motion from Ms. Smiley.
Second?
Second? Second from Ms. Stevens, Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yeah.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
The motion is approved. Thank you so much, Ms. Roth. Um... Dr. Felder, I will turn it back to you, or if, it might be Dr. Dawson?
No, actually, thank you, Mrs. McKinnon. This is, uh, Dr. Gammon, and, um, staff are, uh, staff just jump in, uh, in the interest of time. You don't have to wait for a formal introduction. Introduce yourself and go right ahead.
Sorry, Dr. Gammon, welcome, thank you.
No worries at all, thank you, Dr. Felder. Uh, good evening. I'm here to share an update about a wonderful academic support opportunity, um, in Orange County Schools, and we are excited to announce that all Orange County, um, school students in grades kindergarten through eighth grade, um, have access to a free reading tutoring program, uh, called Book Nook. Um, this engaging reading tutoring program, um, is for readers at all levels. Um, i- if your child doesn't enjoy reading, um, struggles to read, or needs to read more, a Book Nook is certainly for you. Um, this program is convenient for families as it is delivered online, and students love it, um, because it's set to match their reading levels, um, and they have access to a reading tutor who works with them on a plan to improve their reading. And so through this partnership, our kindergarten-through-eighth-grade students will be supported, uh, by a nationwide network of trained and vetted tutors in English and in Spanish. Um, students will be tutored in small groups, three times per week, on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, beginning in early April, um, and this program will run through the end of June. Instruction will take place via Zoom, both at home and at school, uh, depending on individual student circumstances. Um, students identified by a teacher as needing additional reading support, um, will be prioritized for enrollment. Um, sign-ups for this free program began this past week on March 4th. Um, the program... The program runs from four PM to six PM on those days that were mentioned, and families can select one thirty-minute slot each day. Students who attend the after-school program with Orange County Schools will be able to select a thirty-minute slot between four and five PM. The reason that we have adjusted the time for the after-school program is due to it closing at six PM. We want to make sure that students are able to use that five thirty to six PM time to be ready for departure. So it'll be a slight adjustment for that program. As Dr. Felder noted earlier this evening, we believe that reading is the foundation for all learning, and Orange County Schools is committed to ensuring that every student has what they need to become a confident lifelong reader, so we're excited to kick off this partnership with Book Nook. Are there any questions at this time?
Just one quick question. Sorry.
Go ahead, well. Mr. Atherton?
Okay, I'll go. Okay, I'll go. It's fine. Sorry, well. My only question, I'm excited for this. My question is, so students who are further behind are going to be prioritized for enrollment. Are we also doing direct outreach from the teacher to particular families to recommend that students, certain students do this?
Yes, that's a great question, and we are. So during this process, like we've worked at the district level, just based off of the data that we have to identify targeted students. We have a process where we're funneling that to principals, which will then also filter to teachers so that we can make more of those personal contacts, and also so that they can adjust and add students based off of the most current data that they have. So that's the process. We sent out the initial just information piece this past week on Thursday with signups, but we are now are moving to that next phase where it's much more targeted for students.
Mr. Atherton?
So similar question. So on the prioritization, I know it's open up to all of the families. So does that mean if they, if people sign up, they're still gonna get a slot at some point, but it may be later in April? Is that what that means?
So at this time, we've opened up, as we noted at a prior board meeting, for a thousand slots. But we also said that that was something that would be rolling, where we would add additional slots to that over time, based off of how that interest came in. So what we're looking to do is we're certainly using that nationwide network of tutors. If we have a much higher interest, which we certainly hope for, that's when we can also pivot here to more local support to make sure that we're getting students in faster. That's the ultimate goal. But it is a situation where we posted it, anyone can sign up, it's free, but we're also concurrently working to target students and make those personal contacts so that we can make sure that we fill that out appropriately as quickly as we can.
Sorry, Mr. Atherton. No, you go ahead.
No, I was just saying, that sounds fantastic, because I know that, you know, a lot of families are worried about the reading and where children are at this point. So I'm glad we're looking at what the interest is and expanding it if needed.
Thank you, Ms. Atherton. I just wanted to add that we're also leveraging our family liaisons in an effort to connect with our families, and we'll hesitate to use other staff such as social workers and counselors if needed.
Right. Thank you.
Ms. Hauser?
You know, one of the feedback that I'm getting from teachers is now that the kids, first this looks great. I'm getting feedback that now that the kids are coming back, the teachers are becoming more optimistic about their ability to begin to catch them up. So I wondered if we're gonna get a report maybe in the next meeting or two that's just telling us how this is all going. Because I want to be optimistic that it's going well.
Thank you for your question, Ms. Hauser. Absolutely. We will always give updates with regards to progress with working, where we find challenges, et cetera. So stay tuned.
Board, I'm gonna need a motion to extend because we're coming up on our three-hour limit. I'm hoping we can wrap this up by ten o'clock, so I'll have to ask everyone to just hold questions unless they are really burning, so we can get through this agenda. But we'll start with a motion to extend. I move we extend till ten.
Back it.
I have a motion from Ms. Doyle and a second from Mr. Atherton. Ms. Hauser? I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Sure.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Slow down, Madam Vice Chair. Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Okay, so we are in session until ten. Was there someone raising their hand to make a comment? I felt like maybe there was. Okay, well, then we will keep moving.
So good evening. I am here tonight to share an update on chorus and band guidance for Plan B. We have carefully been following the guidance of our partners with Orange County Health Department, the ABC Science Collaborative, and we've continued to share with our schools, teachers, and families. Our current guidance is listed here for band and chorus. So for chorus, the district has purchased specialized coral masks from the Broadway Project for our middle and high school students. Students can sing indoors with the recommended minimum physical distance of eight feet and a singer's mask. In band, we have purchased specialized masks and bell covers for all wind instruments in middle and high school. And students can play instruments indoors with the recommended minimum physical distance of eight feet, but recommend a preferred distance of a ten-foot square. The guidance letters and FAQ are on our Plan B website, and band and chorus teachers and school principals have continued to share this information with families. All families have been notified at the middle and high school of this current update from March third. You can go to the next slide. The board approved the purchase of air scrubbers for band, chorus, and theater rooms, but the noise level of the air scrubbers have inhibited the ability to play, sing, and practice indoors. To minimize noise disruptions, we asked the board to amend its approval of air scrubbers to allow a regular air purifier unit in the band, chorus, and theater room, and add an additional layer to mitigate these, the COVID vaccine, by installing bipolar ionization units in the air vent that will actually clean the air. No additional funding is needed, and we just seek your approval tonight to repurpose the approved air scrubber funds to purchase these bipolar ionization units instead.
Smiley and then Mr. Atherton?
Well, first, I'm just excited to, I was, have been excited to see some pictures on Twitter of some of our students performing and playing. So good. And the switch of the air scrubbers to the regular air purifiers makes sense to me with an understanding that it's gonna be, they're gonna be adequate amounts of air change, you know, that there's calculations around the square footage. I saw some, some stuff in the update that sounds like that calculation is gonna be part of, you know, do you need two air purifiers because it's a very big space? The bipolar ionization units, I have some hesitation around that, and here's what my hesitation is. That particular type of air cleaning is not like on the CDC's list of recommended ventilation interventions. So they have, you know, open windows, switch your Terv thirteen plus, add air purifiers, you know, they have a set of things, UV. And then bipolar ionization is sort of in a different category where it says, like, there's, it's, we're not saying that these don't work, we're just saying that there isn't like a strong evidence base yet of their effectiveness against COVID, and that in some cases they can produce ozone, which has health effects. So I do have some hesitation actually around the bipolar ionization, and I'm curious, like, do we think, like, would the air purifiers on their own, would we be able to put in enough of them to sort of get to the level of the air scrubbers in terms of air circulation?
And I'm hoping some of my partners and operations are gonna jump in, and I'll provide some of that clarification, Ms. Smiley.
And so I'm going to ask, good evening, I'm just going to ask Mr. Mincy. I believe he is on to help explain a little bit more about the bipolar ionization technology. Mr. Mincy, are you there?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes. Yeah.
So, yes, it is possible that we could add additional purifiers in the space. It would come down to whether the circuitry to provide the power for those purifiers was adequate in the large space to run that many on a single circuit. That's something we would have to research by space.
Thank you, Mr. Mincy. Yeah, and I know that there are some spaces in our buildings where we are running new electrical in order to handle it, so I wonder if that's something that we could do. I guess I just wanted to express my concern, you know, I think the, I'm all for like improving our ventilation in our schools, but, you know, that, like, the CDC's, because it's sort of in a different category than the things that the CDC says, use any of these strategies, and then this is sort of in a less proven category. I'm hesitant to spend much money on it. I don't know where other board members are on that.
Mr. Atherton and then Ms. Doyle?
Hey, you know, first of all, as well, I love seeing the creative band pitchers out in the plot areas and some of our auditoriums. And I did have a similar question about the bipolar ionization. If we had talked to ABC Collaborative about that and getting their thoughts on it as well.
So to my knowledge, no communication from Orange County Schools has been directly had with the ABC Collaborative concerning needlepoint bipolar ionization units.
Ms. Doyle?
Thinking about knowing some of the band rooms, but not all of the band rooms. And I know Mr. Mincy knows the band rooms well. A lot of them have doors, some of them have double doors to the outside. So with the circuitry issue of additional air purifiers and, and also knowing that we don't have large numbers of students, the band rooms right now, there seems to be a lot of adequate space is, are there doors to the outside on all the band rooms that would make that just more natural airflow and another option?
So yes, to my knowledge, all band rooms, except possibly AL Standback, have exterior doors. I just can't picture those doors in my memory at the moment. But I feel that all other campuses have exterior doors to their rooms or exterior windows, which would allow for operable opening to exterior.
That is correct, Mr. Mincy. All of them have exterior doors. But AL Standback is using, in some of the classes, the auditorium, which allows the, the teacher to space the students out more than the ten feet, and that's a much larger space.
I wonder if I could just take a moment and kind of circle back to bipolar. Maybe give just a little bit of information on it. So, so we had at least one vendor who has already done a presentation to the maintenance facility group to discuss how this product works. We forwarded that information to SUD Associates, the engineering firm that's been helping us with mechanical design for our district. And they had no immediate objections to the product. They requested additional information from the vendor, and their initial impressions are, is that the product is stable and it is safe. And you are correct in the fact that the CDC has not given an immediate blanket acceptance for that product. However, that that line of thinking is under a change, is my understanding. And I will say that there are many, many, many universities and K-12 schools all across the country who are currently using this product, including right down the street Duke University, Wake Forest, many, many other universities, and my current understanding is there are many, as a quarter of a million facilities in the United States currently using this product. So I think, I think it is a really, really promising item, and it provides something that no other air purification item does. It actually helps purify the air in the space as opposed to having to run it through a filter. The positive and negatively charged ions is they are placed in the air through the airstream, automatically attached to positive and negative ions that are in the air. And once they attract other items, they gain weight, and that mass then can be filtered through either a purifier or through the HVAC system. So there's some really strong science behind this product. And I think as a long term, it is something as a district we really should look towards.
Ms. Smiley?
Oh, sorry. And then, okay, just very quickly, thank you, Mr. Mincy, for that. And I, I think I'm in a similar place with you in terms of, in a, this may be a different place, but as a long-term thing, thinking about it as promising, as a way to sort of take our systems that don't use these higher MERV ratings and, and sort of upgrade them in an easy way. I just wanted, the, the point that you made about a lot of facilities using them, when I, when I was Googling them, I found an article, and the headline is, and this is what sort of what caught my, oh, I wonder what the CDC says. It says, "Schools are spending millions on ionization technology to fight COVID, and there's no good evidence it works." And so I just, now, the CDC does not say it does not work, right? It just says there isn't a strong evidence base yet. And so I think that's, that's where my hesitation is in the short term as sort of an immediate thing to install, is wanting to make sure that we're leveraging the things that we're, we have more certainty around. That's where I am, but I do, I do think that it seems promising as a, as a future way to upgrade our systems.
Ms. Stevens, did you have something you wanted to say?
I did. I do. My question is, there was, I think Mr. Mincy mentioned something about circuitry issues, why we couldn't use another air purifier. So we don't need circuitry situations with this bipolar unit?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. That is a huge, huge advantage to using bipolar. It literally only takes ten to twelve watts. Just to reference that, a hair dryer is a thousand watts. So this thing uses virtually no electricity, requires virtually basically no maintenance. It ties into the HVAC system. It works as long as the HVAC system is on. It will, it's quiet. It makes absolutely no sound whatsoever. There are some really, really huge advantages to the product, and the cost is very affordable. A unit for a single classroom is around three hundred to four hundred dollars, and for a large room like the band room, you might talk eight hundred to a thousand dollars.
Well, one, one other comment or question. So, well, what about the UVC light that people, that some school districts are using? That's quiet as well. You know, there's no sound with that, and it kills lots of germs. How does that, do you know how that compares?
I do. I have no hesitation with UV whatsoever, except for UV does require a different power source. UV also contains harmful chemicals that are extremely, if you break a bulb, it's very dangerous. You do not want any exposure whatsoever to the UV light. It has to be placed in the ductwork where it's no chance for exposure to line of sight. It also requires that it has a direct contact time with the air moving across the light. So in some cases, that UV light needs to be quite large or needs to be multiple lights in the duct system itself. Because as the air is moving across, if it doesn't have the contact time or the exposure, then it doesn't kill anything. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to UV in some locations. I just don't think it's as good of an alternative to treating the air as, as the bipolar is at this time.
Okay. Now, did you say it goes in the ductwork?
Yes.
The UV that I saw, yeah, the, the UV that I've seen rolling into the classrooms are just a tall gizmo type thing. And it doesn't, but anyway, it, that's your area. I'm not going to get into your job.
Yes. So there are, there are indeed portable UV units that you roll into a space and you can do disinfection. But those areas have to be cordoned off while that disinfection is occurring. That's more of a hospital or more of a sterile situation than it is for a classroom.
I've just seen it in classrooms. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
So board members, how, how do we want to proceed? Do we want to approve these items? Do we want to seek information from the ABC Science Collaborative before we make a decision about the bipolar ionization? What do y'all think?
May I just comment here that
Sure.
the ABC Science Collaborative also did not recommend air purifiers. So I don't know if they would technically approve this either.
It seems like they had updated their recommendation when we started talking about lunch, eating lunches inside. Dr. Benjamin was talking a lot about ventilation at that meeting. Maybe I'm misremembering, but I felt like he was talking about those data shifting.
But the CDC did.
Yeah. I'm comfortable moving ahead. I feel like Mr. Mincy knows all of this better than we do. And I'm personally comfortable with repurposing the fence.
I am as well. I think
Me too.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Atherton. Who was the second?
Brenda.
Okay, I saw Ms. Hauser raise her hand. Second. Um, either way, whatever. Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
Um, I'm still feeling kind of unsure. So I'm going to vote no on these. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
No.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
They are approved. Thank you. We'll just keep moving right along because we've got 15 minutes left and a lot more material than that. So let's all just keep chugging.
Okey dokey. Well, given the time constraints, I would like to propose, if so pleases the board, totally up to the board, perhaps we jettison the update on middle school athletics, high spectators, and before and after school update. We can continue, but that would be my recommendation. If not, I do think we're going to need another extension as we do need to get a Slide 40, which is action items with regards to middle school after school budget. And then what I know that you all have been waiting for as has the public in that's around summer learning. We definitely want to present that tonight. And we want to also squeeze in, if possible, Policy 2420 regarding our policy work.
Mr. Atherton?
A motion to modify agenda based on superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Atherton and a second from Ms. Stevens. Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Okey dokey. Proceed as recommended, Dr. Felder. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and my apologies to Mr. Johnson. We will provide updates by the board weekly update. All right. So I'm going to punt down then to Ms. Raff, who will share and discuss middle school after school budget. Ms. Raff?
Yes. Hi, good evening, everyone. We have before you this evening, a request for middle school after school budget. This middle school after school is funded via the local operating budget. And up until now, we were not sure of the program and getting it started. So that budget had been identified as surplus and reallocated to support other Plan B initiatives. We've identified that we will require an additional $42,100 to stand this up for the rest of the school year. And we are asking for approval to appropriate fund balance. Additionally, the after school fees that had been previously approved by the board at $56.50 a week were reflective of five days. And we would like to ask that that be reduced to $45 a week to be reflective of four days. Is there any questions?
Mr. Atherton?
So on the reduction of the after school fees, middle school after school historically was free. Well, I know when my older kids
That, that is correct, Mr. Atherton. That is middle school after school. The reduction of the after school fees would be for your elementary after school. That is extremely confusing right here. And you are correct, middle school after school is free. The fee would be for the regular elementary after school.
Makes sense. Thank you for the clarity. I was confused by that. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Atherton.
All right. Are there any other questions? Or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Atherton and a second from Ms. Smiley. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton? Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you, Ms. Raff.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. And we've been so excited, waiting for this moment to share with you a high level overview of our summer planning. So I'm going to ask, yep, I'm going to share my screen. And here we go. We're excited to try this one too, because this is a new presentation that we're going to be sharing. So I'm just going to make sure. There we go.
Ms. McKenzie, do you need a motion to extend 10 minutes? Or are we doing this in nine minutes?
I'm going to be really quick.
Well, we also have a policy to approve. So I'm guessing that we will need to approve. Dr. Dawson, how much time do you think that you need to get through this?
I'm going to try to do it in five minutes, which will be quick, but I'll have my timer on.
Okay, maybe a motion to extend by 10 minutes to make sure we can get through everything. But we'll all be committed to moving as quickly as possible.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Doyle and a second from Ms. Smiley. Mr. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yeah.
Um, I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Okay, we have until 10:15. After you, Dr. Dawson?
Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So, um, good evening, Ms. McKenzie, Mr. Stevens, Superintendent Felder, board members and community. We are so excited to share with you that prior to even legislation, the summer school legislation, House Bill 82, I'm very proud to say that our CNI team have been working this year to bring all of our summer, previous summer programs under one umbrella to create this summer, our 2021 Orange Summer School Scholars Program. This will be a pre-K through 12 summer program, really focused on encouraging the love of learning. And what's really driving us, of course, is our pursuit for equitable access to scholastic excellence and social emotional wellbeing for all of our students. And the impact is to ensure that our children are provided additional learning opportunities to make sure they are ready for the next school year. And we will be using our usual measuring metrics such as our exact test data, as well as our M-class data, and our SCL survey results to gauge how we are doing this summer. And some of our key elements, again, in alignment with the summer school legislation, HB 82, we will be focusing on remediation, readiness and enrichment. And remediation, of course, for helping our students to catch up in areas that they may be a little bit behind. Readiness to really make sure that our students are ready for next year. As we know, this has been a year like no other. But then all of our students, regardless of they need remediation or not, deserve enrichment. And so we will focus on literacy and mathematics, enrichment for all, and SCL for all. Okay. And let's go a little bit deeper. We're going to be focusing with an MTSS focus, right? Multi-tiered student support system and our different focus, again, our focus on literacy, math, and SCL. And here are some logistics. Key elements, as we heard, our high schools, we will be working with them for them to customize a credit recovery program for their students. And we're looking at two, three week sessions to allow for a break for July 4th weekend for that week. We are looking at eight to five this summer to allow for families to be able to know that their children are in an all day program, and they don't have to try to figure out what they're going to do for, you know, the afternoon or the morning. They know they're with us all day. That we're currently looking at Monday through Thursday, of course, offering in-person and remote options, because we know that some of our families are still not feeling okay yet, quite yet, ready to return in person. And then we're looking at structure of our days for the mornings to focus on our academics afternoon enrichment. That's going to, we'll talk a little bit more about that. And then, of course, our meals will be provided and transportation will be provided. And for staffing, we're going to, of course, always prioritize our OCS staff. And then we are even looking to hire our own high school students to help service tutors. And we are looking to partner with some innovative organizations that are going to help us to really take a look at how we can create opportunities for our students to love learning. Okay. And of course, as our summer school legislation has required us to, but we always make sure that we are targeting our students who need that additional academic support. But we also know that, you know, with the year that we've had, we want to make sure that this opportunity is available to all students as well. And then the key here is that, you know, oftentimes our students needing remediation oftentimes don't get access to the opportunity for enrichment. So we're going to make sure that all of our students have access to enriching learning opportunities. Sorry, I'm going to go home. And here's our timeline. So what we're doing right now, we're in the process of planning and preparing. And interest surveys will be going out to our staff shortly to gauge our staff and how many they would like to participate in teaching this summer. Plus also, the staff have some ideas of things that they would like to offer as part of the enrichment. We are open to that, of course, because we know that we have very talented teachers that have expertise in other areas than what they teach. And then we're going to be looking to hire in April and then provide any additional professional development that our teachers and tutors may need to make sure that we're ready for our summer. And then as the year ends, we're looking at offering our first session from mid-June to the first part of July, having a week break, and then doing mid-July to the end of July. This also will allow students to do all, both sessions to meet the requirements of HB 82, but also allow our teachers to have some time off for summer, because we know they've been working so hard. They deserve a break, and we understand that as well. So we're trying to provide that flexibility. And then for our academic focus, just as in previous years, we're looking at our usual literacy focus with our RTA and pre-K through three programs, our different math supports for K-5, 6 through 8, and of course, our ESY program and also serving our ELL students as well. And then the enrichment part, that in the afternoons, we are focusing on STEAM, we're focusing inquiry-based hands-on opportunities. And throughout the whole day, we're going to have SCL infused opportunity, physical education. And this is for all of our students. And yes, we're going to target our students who we know need the additional support, but all students need to get back into the love of school and the joy of learning. So again, these are some of our, you know, high level overview of what we're offering this summer. There are some things that we're going to tweak, of course. And then as we finalize our program, we will definitely share that with our families. And signup will be coming towards the end of this month. So I think I did that in less than five, at least five minutes hopefully.
That was pretty impressive, Dr. Dawson, your delivery and the program. So thank you very much for that information. This is really exciting to see. Board members, do you have any burning questions or comments? Ms. Hauser?
Thank you. First of all, this is fantastic. So thank you. This is what everybody's been waiting for. You're doing read to achieve K to 3. I was wondering about reading and literacy for K to 8. You know, what, you know, what about the other grades? Did I miss something?
So we're offering, so yes, what I shared a lot of was for our pre-K through 8, because our high school will be working with them for them to customize the programs that their students will need as that's a little bit more specific because of the programming that our high school students will need. It's, you know, because of specialized courses and areas of study, we will be working with high schools for that.
I guess I was trying to understand if we're offering support for reading support for grades 4 to 8.
So, so yes, so there's literacy is focused pre-K through 8. Yes. And I guess in the, so just to be clear, Ms. Hauser, when we were, we were accentuating the earlier grade literacy folk guide, just because we know that there have been such a strong need there. So we were highlighting those areas. But yes, we are focusing on literacy for all grades. Thank you for bringing that up.
Ms. Hauser?
What, what, any idea of how many students we're expecting to serve in this?
We're not quite there yet. Our interest survey will be going out this, a little bit later this month. So we will know how many families and students will be interested.
Very, very good. Thank you.
Other board members, I can only see I can only see Ms. Stevens and Ms. Doyle. I've lost the connection for other board members. So feel free to jump in if you have something you'd like to ask.
Yeah, Dr. Dawson, I do have a question on, are we going to offer virtual options for this summer? I do know there are families that, that have chosen virtual because their child might be at high risk or the family might be. And so I, I hope we, we send out the surveys or requests, we consider both to see how we can service a community.
Yes, and I know that I was going super fast, but yes, I did share that we will be offering both in-person and remote opportunity.
Perfect, thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you so much, Dr. Dawson.
Thank you.
Well, we will move right along to Policy 2420.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Dawson, for that presi. I really like that. I'm here tonight to share Policy 24, 2420 is the adoption of policies. Staff would like to recommend that we adopt changes to Policy 2420 that will allow the superintendent to approve updates that are non-substantial, that are cross-references, that are errors, that are number changes, and editorial comments to policies. The rationale is that we have a backlog of policies that we need to bring before you, and we're hoping to be able to put a, a large number of policies into this category to allow us to bring those policies with major revisions to the policy committee and exclude those with minor, minor revisions. So we're hoping that you will consider this so that we could really get to the business of updating our policy manual and bringing all of these backlog of policies before the policy committee and then ultimately before the board.
Are there any questions, or do I have a motion to approve?
To approve her recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Stevens and a second from Ms. Smiley. Are there any questions or discussions before I call the vote?
I do have one. So I just assume that the updates will get noted in each of the policies as we would have normally approved it. So we don't end up with one out in the public that says revision XYZ and the update doesn't show that it's been updated. So I assume it will get notified on the, on the policy that it's been updated and that data is updated.
So I think I understand your question, Mr. Atherton.
What?
So, so all of our policies have last updated date? And I'm just asking that that gets modified or updated to reflect when they do this?
Yes.
My understanding that staff will bring forward a list of anything that gets updated so that we will see what's been updated in list form. But Dr. Felder just has the authority to make these logistical changes, these editing, small edits to policy, which is basically already our understanding of policy anyway. This just makes it more explicit.
Right. And I've said this before without a motion. Some time ago, years ago, we, the board said that we would allow staff and the superintendent to make those type of changes. So this is not our first rodeo.
Yeah. Yeah, let me clarify what it's asking for. On, when they do this, I don't have an issue with, with this at all. What I was just asking is date reviewed, approved, or just noted somewhere that it was modified so we know the data was modified. That's all I was asking for, is that we show that it was revised somehow in the policy.
Yes, so the electronic policy manual will note the date that it was modified.
Right, you've done that before, Teresa. You're right. It's been done, Matt.
Okay, great. Well, I have a motion from Ms. Smiley and a second from Ms. Stevens. Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yeah.
I vote yes, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Dr. Felder, do you have anything, anything else you'd like to share before we adjourn tonight?
No, ma'am. We are done.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, for your hard work and contributions to this meeting. I'm really appreciative. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
The motion from Ms. Smiley and a second from Ms. Doyle. Ms. Hauser?
Yeah.
I vote yes, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Have a great night, everyone.